Going to reconvene this city council meeting on this June 26 at 6:32. I have nothing to report out from closed session other than we gave direction to the negotiating team. And if you'll all join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty and justice.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Connie?
Here.
Strong, Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor, I read it.
Present. All right, just for the public's purpose, Councilmember Strong is absent this evening, and we all knew that she would be away. She's on a excused absence. The next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there's a member, a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may address the council at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda? All right, looks like we're all here for agenda items. All right, I'm going to close public communication and move on to public matters. The first item is the bi-monthly update from the Chamber of Commerce. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you all very much. Hope you all enjoy this wonderful, cooler day today.
Yes.
All right. Again, for those of you who do know me and who don't know me, I'm Misty Johnson. I'm the chamber coordinator at our Chamber of Commerce, and I'm presenting our bi-monthly update. So in my two months at the Chamber, a lot has been accomplished with instant immersion into my position to help coordinate, at that point, the impending 42nd Annual Willets Car and Bike Show. For the first time in over four decades, this event was held on Main Street. With huge thanks to John Kavasnikah for his fundamental commitment to see this event succeed, it showed in spades. From his detailed coordination, communicative nature, rallying a troupe of volunteers, and that's just the start. Together, we worked tirelessly to meet each end, with all of that, including our Board of Directors and a prodigious group of volunteers who came out to support this event and their community. And with only minor hiccups, I say with confidence and pride that the 42nd Annual Willets Car and Bike Show on Main Street was a huge success. And honestly, I feel like we should really give a hand to all the people who were involved in this, who paid and supported the community. Between the car show, and this is just a side note, I don't want to digress too far, but with the car and bike show, the great turnout we had there, along with Hometown, I feel like it's appropriate to say that COVID is a thing of the past, and we've all come out and we're enjoying town again, and each other as a community. So, I mean, that's just wonderful to see. As we continue on, during the car and bike show, restaurants were full with patrons, and we had many people in restaurants who were pumping out to go orders to people as quick as they could. The Grange had one of the best turnout ever for their pancake breakfast, and that was phenomenal. The change of the event to Main Street provided more revenue to local businesses than having it over in the park. And the Chamber, as the Chamber's committed to supporting our local businesses, this was a best-case scenario outcome, so we're really proud of that. With a hard push to promote the event, from social media to Google to the Willets Weekly Newspaper, word of mouth, et cetera, we had the largest turnout of people and entries. More than 150 vehicle and bike entries, people traveling as far as the south end of the state. Many travelers that I spoke to found Willets and our event simply by typing in to Google "near me." It took a little bit of work to get that to be, but we're getting noticed. Droves of people, many fresh faces came out with their families, their dogs and their dates to see and enjoy a beautiful day in downtown Willets. And not a single person I spoke with was disappointed. Beyond the car and bike show, I've been busy with our web developer redesigning our Chamber website. Our social media accounts are quite active, with regularly maintained, with fresh posts, including sharing of many of our local businesses from their posts to support and promote them. I've walked the north and south ends of town, introducing myself, meeting and speaking to businesses. This has given me a direction on where I need to concentrate efforts to help provide resources, tools, and connections to help bridge some of the gaps that I encounter through these conversations. Lastly, I am developing, with John Kavasnikah, a fun community event we're calling the First Annual Willets Community Yard Sale. Registered participants would have their addresses pinned on an online map with brief details of the items that they have for sale by category, allowing anyone with cellphone internet access to click on the map and travel from sale to sale. This would help households reduce their unwanted items, make a little extra money, and reduce a whole lot of waste that would be going into our landfills. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions?
No questions, maybe just comments, and I concur that it was a really good event, and I want to thank the Chamber and the other volunteers that all stepped up and collaborated as a community to really make this happen. It was a good event, and I'm very proud of what you did. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Again, I'd like to echo that, and I just totally am happy that we're able to take back our Main Street. I think that was the intent of the bypass, and I know we obviously lost a lot of traffic into town, but it's nice to hear that Google's kind to us now and having gone there. I know, John, all the work you put into that car show, and then it was nice for the downtown event recently that it started off slow, but you knew that once it cooled down, everybody came out and everybody was there, it seemed like it. So, great job, guys.
Thank you for sitting here for part of this. Made a great deal.
And I think that in this last year, maybe more, we've been talking about, you know, the TOT and our relationship with the Chamber, and we've asked of the Chamber to come and report to us quarterly and to show some progress. And I know that you're made up of mostly volunteers, and that's a lot of heart and hard energy that you put into making it happen without any personal benefit or gain. And I have seen an improvement in what the Chamber is offering, and I'm kind of excited to see what the Chamber has to offer in this coming year. I think that it's definitely showing a sign of improvement and worthy of keep partnering up together to see better things happen.
I just wanted to say thank you as a Main Street business owner. It really worked, and I'm very grateful that you brought the car show up to Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else from the?
I thank you very much for that, John. I gave a glowing review of it last council meeting, and as a volunteer, I thought it worked very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Stransky. Is there any other members of the Chamber? I mean, at this time, it would be appropriate if you just wanted to add a thing or two. If not, that's okay, too. This would be your moment to shine if you did. Okay, well, we thank you. All right, we're going to move on then to our next order of business, which is the update from the Little Lake Fire District. There is a written report within the pack, and you can see that the fire district has been very busy. I was hoping that maybe with the swear-in happening at 5:00, that maybe our new fire chief might be here this evening, but I don't see Eric here. But we want to congratulate him on officially becoming our new chief. Brian, do you want to add anything to the fire department report or anything that was noted from this evening's ceremony?
No, I think the fire district has sound leadership right now, and they acknowledged during the swearing-in ceremony how they work with the city and specifically community development with code enforcement and code compliance. So, we're looking forward to continue that relationship.
All right, wonderful. And if you haven't had an opportunity to read the full agenda, if you go to thecityofwillets.org, you can click, and then you can see all of the updates from the fire department, the Chamber, and other reports. When you get to the end, there's those reports on what's even happening within each department in the city, and they're really informational. So, check those out if you get a chance. Sorry, I'm losing my voice this evening. We have no enactment of ordinances before us this evening. Thank you, Derek. So, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have two items before us. We have the city council minutes from June 12, as well as June 13 budget workshop.
I would like to move the acceptance of the minutes of June 12 and the June 13 budget workshop.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us on the minutes? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, wait, would you like to address? If you would, you have to ask if you'd step up here so that we can all hear you.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Aguilera, and I just have a question about this. I'm confused about why you're approving of city council minutes from June 12. Isn't this today, the June meeting?
We've got the minutes from our last meeting, and we're approving.
Oh, so it shouldn't be June, right? It should be May?
No, we, so today's the 26, and we met on the 12, and we met on the 13. And we always approve the minutes, which is the record. So basically, we're all affirming that the city clerk typed the minutes up correctly to reflect the action that took place on the 12th and the 13th.
Okay, and then today's minutes will be?
We approved at the next meeting.
And it'll be June 26, or whatever day it is.
You got it.
All right, thank you, just curious.
No, please ask questions.
It was confusing.
All right, no questions or comments. All right, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. All right, motion carries for zero. Moving on to the monthly activity reports, we have none this evening, so we'll keep moving to commissions, agencies, and authorities. We have no business before us this evening, so moving right along to the city manager reports and recommendations, I'll turn it over to City Manager Brian Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item, number 8A, is an item that has been discussed in brief with the council over the last several months, has been discussed internally at the staff level. It is a master tax sharing agreement that has been in the works for years, maybe decades, but the latest effort that has produced the document that you will be considering tonight has been ongoing for nearly two years with an ad hoc committee formed with the municipal managers, two of us from the four, as well as two board of supervisory members and then county staff, and numerous attorneys representing the interests of the groups. The tax sharing agreement is a document or a platform that will facilitate annexations for the four municipalities and also protects or ensures the interest of Menendezino County is taken in consideration during those annexation requests. The document is, if you have read it, reviewed it, and I know I've discussed it with council members, it does get a little technical. Annexations are technical by nature, but for the benefit of the City of Willets, it's a straightforward document. We are updating our general plan and land use element, which has a revised sphere of influence. Ultimately, as this agreement gets ratified by the four municipalities, it has already been ratified by the City of Ukiah and Menendezino County, as the other two municipalities adopt it, then there will be a unified agreement that facilitates, like I said, annexations, and also spells out how those provisions will work. Ukiah is a unique situation, Fort Bragg's a unique situation. We're a little different with any proposed annexations. There's multiple ways of looking at it, but it does work for the City of Willets as we look to expand our boundaries through annexations. Brian, I don't know how much detail you want to get, I'm trying to keep it at this level.
Just to clear, we currently have no annexations planned in Willets.
No, no, we do not have any annexations. We do have unincorporated properties that receive municipal services, and we're good with that right now. This is not a platform for us to go out and annex properties in a land grab or anything like that. That is not the intent. The intent here is if a property owner does come forward and ask for incorporation into the city, or if we're trying to accommodate a new project, or if it's in the best interest for the city and that resident or that property owner, then there is a defined process. And before, it was not a defined process. That's why there has been meaningful annexations in this county for, say, decades?
Since 1980.
1980.
1980s.
So, as you can see from those comments and you hear, there's desperately a need for this. LAFCO has been advised in brief on the status of this document. They have acknowledged it. It does not circumvent that process. They're still would be involved in those annexations, the review, and the justification for those annexations.
Any comments, questions?
We've talked about this many times, over many months.
We have.
True. And once again, the document does have special provisions to accommodate what has happened in Ukiah Valley and in the harbor area of Fort Bragg. For Port Arena, they're in a different provision, different area with their potential annexation and their municipal functions. City of Willets, we're kind of in between those two. We don't have excessive growth outside our municipal limits that are on services, but we do have some situations, like I said, that we may want to look into the future. Are we actively pursuing that? No. We do not need to, but this agreement does have a provision in it that says that as long as we comply with the other elements in there, the formulas and the actual transition or the transfer of property tax, TOT, and sales tax generated on those identified properties, there is a provision in there that really helps the City of Willets. If we do want to do an annexation, it doesn't go get into the details that has been carved out for the benefit of the Ukiah and Fort Bragg. We can propose an annexation if necessary and still have separate negotiations with the county, the property owner, to make sure everyone's whole as that annexation moves forward. And this is the other thing here, and I point this out, the city manager from Ukiah facilitated, and he really was a champion of this effort. One of the key cornerstones of this whole effort is to be fair in the exchange of services as a property gets brought into a municipality, what a property owner can expect. And also that this was not an attempt to undermine the county's ability to generate revenue or collect revenue for the services that they already provide or have provided. So, it was trying to be a fair, equitable solution to the best of our ability. It's not going to be perfect, but it gets everyone what they're looking for.
Over the last seven and a half years I've been on the council, I've been approached by a couple of different people who've lived outside the City of Willets limits and have had a desire to be annexed within the property, but we didn't have any kind of system in place. There was nothing worked out with the county, and I think that this is an important tool. And I very much appreciate all the city managers within the county working hard to ensure that we have this system in place so that when someone comes to us and they do want to be annexed into the city limits, that we are able to look for a path forward. There are times when annexation can be beneficial to a property owner. I think one scenario that came to me was somebody had some property that was outside the city limits, and their property value was less because they were in the county or they weren't able to get some of the services that are provided for residents who are inside the city limits, so.
Can I also, I'm a city representative on LAFCO, and one of the things that has kind of tied up annexation, not just cities, but also community service districts and fire departments throughout the county, is that there was no master tax sharing agreement. So, there are entities out in the county, there are fire departments that are responding to areas adjacent to their districts where they're not able to get money for those departments to get compensated without an agreement in place. So, when it comes to LAFCO, like, hey, we want to annex these parcels into our district, well, go see the county for a tax sharing agreement, and it kind of was falling on deaf ears. So, this kind of is not just about cities taking inland from adjacent areas. And then the example I would like to give for us is, we legally cannot provide certain services. We're kind of in a weird spot here in Willets because PG&E owned the water service, so there are people in the county that have water service, but they don't have sewer. So, if they get to the point where their septic system fails and they need to hook up to our sewer, legally, we can't hook up to them unless we enter into an agreement with the idea that they may one day come into the city. But without this agreement in place, we would have no mechanism to advance that forward. So, that's when I kind of wanted to add that we're not out there actively trying to annex the county, but I wanted to say that if that mechanism needed to happen for one of those reasons which I stated, we would now be able to move forward. And also those fire departments and those community service districts in the county that want to clean up some messes that are out there. And if you talk to fire departments or talk to some of these folks, you'll get those examples. They're too numerous to mention, but they've been tied up with the whole tax sharing.
Just three other quick points. One, like I said earlier, it's the basic premise is fairness and equity. This would prevent a project shopping around the four municipalities and trying to get the best rate for, you know, tax services, you know, brokered deal for exchange for annexation and what they would provide to the cities. In that light, this is a good example of the four municipalities lining themselves, working in conjunction with the county in the best interest of not only the county but the four municipalities. So, it's a good example that unilateral approach works, and we can make it work in the Menendezino County and the four municipalities. And then finally, it's a recommendation in your goals, the big box we can check and take and move forward.
We like that. It's in line with the goals that the city council set several years ago, and every time we take action or we consider something, we always ask ourselves, is this in line with the goals? Because we want to stay committed to our mission and our goals so that we actually accomplish something, which is very, very important. Otherwise, we can find ourselves spinning our wheels and being pulled in many directions. With that, I'd like it to open it up to the public. Keep in mind, you have three minutes. If you have a question or a comment on what you've heard about this tax sharing agreement, now would be the time for you to step up to the podium and state your name and give your question or comment. If you could go ahead and step up there, Randy?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak up. My name is Randy Dalton, and I'm just returning from a friend, James Winters and Mark Winters. They live out at the end of the road that goes south of town, along by the creek. They live in a trailer and have been for 10, 20 years. And they've often almost flooded, and I've been following the paper, the Willets Weekly, about this proposed pavement preservation project, and I didn't know when, if this is appropriate, but the sphere of influence, sphere of influence in LAFCO.
Go ahead.
Okay, I will bring it around, trust me. I'm concerned about land use planning and the environmental impacts of the $886,000 that's being proposed for sidewalks and asphalt, and the runoff, 100% increase in runoff. Whenever you put an impervious surface, I'm a soils person. My husband graduated from Berkeley in Conservation of Natural Resources, and I studied for five years with a man who founded, for 35 years, he was the head of the 13 states of the Soils Conservation Service, which is now the Natural Resources Conservation District. And so, I'm a learned woman. I've been here only for 12 years, but I grew up in Casper, lived 45 years up in Lightenbill, raised my six kids, and I have 13 grandchildren, and all my kids and grandkids live here in Menendezino County. My grandpa had 65 acres in Navarro River, on the mouth of the river, wearing the rainbow trout in 1958. My brother and I could swoop up the rainbow trout. Sauk I come in December, Chinook comes in January, Coho comes in March, three different runs. And I'm not sure what the mapping, when I've gone to the library, there's been no map.
Randy, I don't want you to.
Okay, I'm concerned about the fact that there's no environmental impact report, this information about being not a land grab. I know $800,000 to me is a huge amount of money, you know, for many of us.
We're talking about the tax sharing.
I want to see an environmental impact report. I don't want to see things being done in private where contracts are being handed out, and it's not in the public purview. I went out to all the signs. I went to talk to Mr. Cotter, the head of the Public Services in the back behind the library. Their street names are not even on the streets anymore. He said it was Walnut Street by Bluster Lane. I went out there, all the street signs are removed. So, my friend Mark, who's lived there, said I haven't heard anything about this. He said when they put in the bypass, they dug in a huge well and went through their underground water aquifer. Now, his well is drying out, and these are issues that are long-range. Grandpa Dalton used to say, 100 years from now it's going to make a difference, fight like heaven. And the first thing you know, city people come here, they want streetlights and sidewalks.
I'm sorry, Randy.
Okay, well, I'm concerned that a full environmental impact report needs to be done, and the mapping, and there's access to the information, it's not here. You go to the library, I went to the Willets City Council, they didn't have it.
I'm afraid you're.
Okay, well, I would like it noted that this is not being done in an open manner. We need workshops, we need further discussion, and I would like to see, I'm glad to see people here tonight, because I think that we sometimes remember it's not very many people.
Randy, we need to continue.
Thank you, I'm concerned.
Is there anyone else that would like to address us on the master tax sharing agreement?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. I'm Sage Sanjafmo, City Manager for the City of Ukiah, and I just want to thank the council for ensuring that this was a strategic objective that was dedicated for staff time and council effort to move forward. This is, as all of you have described this evening, I think you've described it very eloquently, about what this is. This is an agreement for cooperation. It's to facilitate good land use planning. It doesn't mean that there's going to be annexation, but it ensures that any discussion with property owners in the communities where our cities are, with the county, that there would be cooperative discussions at the local level to decide what is in the best interest of the city as far as if there's interest in annexation and moving forward with property owners. And it really puts it in the hands, in the case here of the City of Willets, to have that discussion locally with your constituents, as well as in Ukiah, Point Arena, and Fort Bragg. And the basis, as City Manager Bender said, is based upon cooperation. I appreciate that strategic effort that the council has identified for this and your leadership. I appreciate Vice Mayor Gonzalez's steadfast leadership at the LAFCO level. I know you've served on LAFCO for many years, and this is a strategic piece that has been missing in the toolset available to our cities and to our county. And lastly, just want to thank City Manager Bender, who has been instrumental with his knowledge and expertise at the table to lead to an effort of cooperation in this agreement. The one last thing that I'll say is that the provision for Ukiah is to ensure that, you know, Ukiah you know, Ukiah doesn't cherry pick areas, that there's good land use planning that is in place. Ukiah, you know, was like Willets, you know, 30, 40 years ago, but without orderly, good, sound growth at a local level and discussion, we've certainly sprawled outside of city limits where the city of Ukiah is five square miles and you have probably two to three times the growth that that size outside of city limits, which has led to poor services. You know, in some areas, a lot of disadvantaged unincorporated communities, properties that struggle because they don't have the right services and piecemeal land use planning. And so this agreement, especially in the case for Willets, will ensure that those discussions get to happen at a local level and you get to avoid what we have experienced in the Ukiah Valley. And that's just said honestly about what we've dealt with in the Ukiah Valley. And I'm pleased now that we have this cooperation in place with the county because we get to now hopefully put the Ukiah Valley on the right path to fixing those issues that we had with sprawl and piecemeal growth.
Thank you.
So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Sage.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on the item?
It'll be short.
Thank you, Larry Aguilera. I just want to say, I just have a simple mind, I don't know all this heavy stuff or all this confusing stuff, but will my property tax go up?
Can you guarantee it?
I guess the question is, do you live in the, do you live on the edges of the city limits?
He lives in the city.
You live inside the city limits?
That's my name.
No, well, then I can't imagine there'd be any impact to you.
Hi, my name is John Alameda and been a lifelong resident here in this county and of Willets. The tax sharing thing interests me. When I used to work for the county, I always heard going back and forth about sharing taxes because the county puts out, and they do, a lot of social services stuff and benefits. And, but now we see all the big box stores in Ukiah and we shop down there at them big box stores. Does that mean we get some of that tax money up here in Willets? Is Ukiah going to share it? It'd be nice. I'd like to see some of that tax money come this way. So maybe you can explain how that sharing would work.
So Ukiah wouldn't be sharing their sales tax with us because they're either located within the city of Ukiah or they're located within the county. If the business is located in the county, the tax is going to the county. If they're located in the city of Ukiah, it's going to go to Ukiah. So what do we always say? Shop local, shop Willets. We've got lots of great stores. We just heard from the Chamber of Commerce, shop local.
Then there's no sharing.
I think maybe a further explanation than of what the tax sharing agreement, it's not us sharing with Ukiah or sharing with Fort Bragg.
It doesn't create a pool.
Yes. We're sharing with the county, if anything.
Basically, it is, and it's hard for me to explain because we know that Willets is not in this situation, but as was just discussed, big box on the fringe of Ukiah, Ukiah provides a lot of those essential services for that business to survive, but they don't receive the taxes. Ultimately, what Ukiah would like to do is adjust that imbalance. This agreement lays out the protocol and then there is a formula for the gradual transfer of those taxes that are generated back to the responsible entity, which in this case would be Ukiah. It's not a countywide pool, it's not going to where every other municipality is going to benefit from Ukiah's decisions or actions. You may see it because now the county is not being stretched to provide services that they're not really in the position to. So once again, so the county could be much more efficient and put their resources and not trying to duplicate municipal services, but to countywide services, which is their remit, like you said, social services, health programs, that's what they're assigned to do. Leave the municipality of running services and running utilities and supporting development to the jurisdictions.
Social services covers within city limits and outside.
Yes, that's true. So we can in turn get a higher level of return for those services that we need and want.
The classic example is when a city stretches out to, let's say, Otto Row in Ukiah. If Ukiah stretched out and stuck in Otto Row into the city and then all of a sudden the county was counting on that tax base from Otto Row out there, now the county has to do with less under the old classic example. We don't really have that example anywhere around here. I mean, I think if we ever annex something, it might be, you know, one or two houses coming in because their sewer failed and they want to come in. So that example isn't going to be as classic as what you might imagine. Fort Bragg, for example, if they end up annexing the wharf area down there or whatever, then there's obviously tax base down there that's generating money for the county. And it probably affects them more than us. And again, this, the classic example is probably not going to affect us. I think where it's going to really help out is it's going to allow the, like I said, some of those fire departments, I think it's Anderson Valley wanted to annex some parcels in, but it crossed over into another entity and they couldn't come to an agreement because there was no tax sharing agreement. So we're all basically trying to come together and play nice as a whole. On our end, it's not affecting us as much as some of the other entities, but it does provide a vehicle for not only us, but again, all the other entities out there that want to maybe take in somebody outside their borders.
Dolores, could you drop that door all the way open? I notice there's a gentleman out there. I want to make sure that he has the opportunity to participate or hear. He doesn't want to come in?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure he had that opportunity. Thank you. All right. Is that clear as mud or? All right, any further questions from the public? All right, hearing that, I'll bring it back to council. Any follow-up questions, clarifications, comments?
I think that it's a great step in the right direction. We've been doing this, first, my first knowledge of it was in 1980 and it's been going since then and they finally came up with a workable agreement to share these things. And it's a road that we can all use in different cities to come together to take, get our part of what the county's collecting now from us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member.
I would like to move recommended action of an approved resolution of the master tax sharing agreement between the county of Mendocino, city of Fort Bragg, the city of Point Arena, the city of Ukiah, and the city of Willets.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, the motion, the motion carries 4-0 in favor of the master tax sharing agreement between the county of Mendocino, the city of Fort Bragg, the city of Point Arena, the city of Ukiah, and the city of Willets.
You know, and I just want to go on record of thanking Supervisors Jody and Mohern. They were behind that ad hoc and also our city managers from the municipalities have participated in this. I'm glad for once we were able to put aside all our individual differences and come together. You don't normally see government working together, so this is kind of a nice thing.
All right, and with that, I'll turn it back over to City Manager Bender for the consideration of our proposal.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. This next item has been, was submitted to myself, I had discussions with the food banks, newly appointed executive director. Long story short, they are financially hit hard with the increased need for their services and resources they provide to the community as well as, like you noted, the newly appointed executive director, they have some concerns about financial status. They missed one or two grant opportunities, they're still chasing them. Because of that, they're looking at an operational shortfall. The request right now that they submitted for the council's consideration, so let me explain, I'm not asking for, you're not going to be granting an action item, you're going to, whatever the discussion takes place and how the results are, I anticipate some direction that I'll bring back to the council for your formal consideration and action. So right now this discussion.
Direction.
Food Bank is present to address any questions or comments. They're looking for financial assistance. They are, like I said, going to be facing operational deficits and that's going to hit the services they provide, how they provide the services that are desperately needed within this community and the surrounding areas as well, they provide outside our jurisdiction. The initial request was upwards of $200,000. Unfortunately, the city's not in a position to carry that type of responsibility at this time without going back in the budget and doing some major alterations of allocations. What we have done with the guidance of the council, we were able to release a check to the food bank, who's one of two other community service-based organizations that received a supplemental payment to our ARPA program. So that check was released last week. That was for $25,000.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand. And the budget, proposed budget, budget has a provision in there that they would also receive $5,000. That is what the budget allocates for the community groups that we have identified that should receive some funding, financial assistance for their programs. From there, that's where I am looking for some direction and guidance in what you want to do.
So when I first heard that the food bank was in crisis, I was really concerned because they provide critical services for those that are most in need in our community. And I have to say that I really appreciate the city manager. He has met with them and really made an effort to try and figure out what kind of options we have in terms of ensuring, at least for the short term, a means for the food bank to continue. The bigger question before us, I think, is that in providing any kind of stimulus to help them, I think that we need to have some parameters in place so that they're able, this is an opportunity to extend the time needed for them to find alternative sources of revenue because the city's not in a position on a long term to be able to carry the food bank. I think it's wonderful that we had all previously agreed to give $25,000 out of our ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan, money that we received as a city to help sustain us during the COVID time. The city of Willets didn't expend our ARPA funds and I think it was at last month's meeting, we had a discussion about those funds and we did earmark those funds for some projects that we felt were worthy and things that were in need of repair that maybe we didn't have money from out of our general fund. I am inspired of giving some more funding to the food bank, but I believe that it should come strictly from the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds, rather than from the general fund because I think it's more in line with the purpose and intent of those particular funds. And I'm open to discussion and parameters on what we think that that should look like, what timeframe. I know in discussions with Brian, he had talked about maybe some kind of quarterly amount that we could potentially send their way. And with each quarter, we would also get an update of the progress that they're making so that we know that we're not just putting a chunk of money, but this is also becoming self-sustainable. Maybe at the quarter, they tell us, hey, we have a grant writer and we've identified these grants and we've begun the application process. So there would be different checks and balances along the way. What do you think? What's your thoughts?
Well, I think I would want to have some more analysis. I mean, I, obviously, I just met you tonight and I'd like to hear from you, so the public can hear. I saw in your letter that you wanted money from our SB 1383 grocery recovery program, but in talking to city manager, I don't think we've got a lot of extra funds in that amount. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. So that's, help me out here, Dusty, we're about $70,000, $75,000 that was received through CalRecycle. And those funds have been defined through programs that code compliance is going to be implementing and the administration costs are going to be paid back into community development. So we already have that allocated.
See, that's all correct. It's about $70,000 and the money's been earmarked for some state mandated requirements. So it's not money that's there to.
Give away then.
To give away or in that sense.
We would have to deprogram it from community development code compliance, do a lateral shift, present it there. The mayor's proposal of using ARPA is probably the most realistic and easily sourced funding that we could apply to this request. And I just want clarification, working with Kim Tippett, she's the individual who brought the quarterly payment. I was just, you know, listening and we refined it, so it was really her proposal that is being presented, but I would love Kim to come up here and make your sales pitch.
Well, hello, Mayor Rodriguez and City Manager Brian Bender and council members. My name is Kim Tippett. I'm the executive director for the Willets Food Bank and Community Services. First of all, I'd like to thank you so much for the support that you have given us and thank you for considering our request for additional funding. Really appreciate it. When I first took this job, I'm from Lake County and I thought I was taking a part-time job that was turnkey. I kind of stepped into a different situation. I found that, you know, with the executive director retiring, their move, we missed a couple of really important grants that were due in April. And then with rising inflation and the increasing demand on the food bank, we only had a few months of solvency left when I stepped into the business. To give you some idea of how it's increased, last year we served 80 households twice a week. January, it went to 111 on average, twice a week. May, when I took over, there was such a demand for food, we, instead of people picking up bimonthly, now they're able to pick up weekly to meet their increasing needs. So we went to 137 households per day, twice a week on average. And then since the Redwood Empire Food Bank has closed their distribution, they were not allowed to hand it out in our county, which has totally closed that program down. We are now seeing 180 households on average per week. And this last week, we've seen 197, 187. So every day we're getting new people that are realizing, okay, well, I can go to the food bank to get food. So it's really important, you know, a lot of need out there. To give you an example, California has a 23% food insufficiency.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. California has a 23% food insufficiency. Last year, we served 29.8% of the population of Willets. When I just did the numbers now, we're serving 39.2%. So it's a huge portion that are receiving food due to the economy. The California Board of Food Banks down in Sacramento, when I went to their conference, they had explained that most food banks are seeing about a fourth of the donations since January that they have always received because of the inflation. And we found that to be true as well. You know, we feel confident that we can raise from our private donors about $25,000 more. So with your $25,000 that you've already given us, that leaves us about $175,000 short for the year. We have, I have hired two grant writers, I've been writing grants. You know, we were sending out a mailing that should go out by the end of the week or next week. I've been working full-time, you know, instead of part-time to, you know, do everything I can to save the food bank because it is a worthwhile cause. If it wasn't the other company, I probably would have left. But, you know, I have come to really love the people here in Willets and, you know, I had prayed for a job that I could serve other people and I am so touched by this community and the people in it. You know, I'm asking for help because this organization has served the public for 43 years and we haven't asked the city for this type of support before, but I really feel like, you know, eating is a basic human essential. You know, we're asking for a one-time help, you know, and I am doing everything possible and, you know, trying to get that learning curve in as quick as possible, you know, and do everything that I can to raise those funds. And, you know, I told Brian that I don't want to take $1 more than we need. And, you know, I told Brian that I don't want to take $1 more than we need to from the city. I just really want to keep the doors open. But, you know, we can, like, if we did a quarterly thing where you can help us out with a few more months, plus about $25,000 a month for us to operate, or a little bit more, but that would kind of keep us to see if we can get some of those grants that we just applied for and, you know, keep touching base until we don't need the help of the city.
Any questions? So when I looked over your budget, because I was trying to see if there was, like, something that was missed in this last year that could have triggered this, but it looks like in the last couple of years, you've been running in the negative.
That's what it appears to be to me. I don't think that the major grants were applied for. Some of our grants that we had normally gotten in the beginning of the year was the TR Erickson Grant, which was due in April, and the Community Foundation. Those were two really important grants that we missed. I did get in contact with the Erickson Grant, and they allowed us to apply late even though we had missed it, so I was really happy for that. So we did apply and ask for that. You know, so like I said, we're doing everything that we can, but if we can, you know, receive some assistance to not close because, you know, between the hotel vouchers that we give out in the winter and the food that we give out, you know, it's a lot of essential services that we provide to the community.
Okay. And the last question I had was, I know how critical the food services are, but sometimes when you're in a crunch, you've got to look at your budget and figure out, and I was trying to figure out, like, what could you absolutely do without bare bones in order to keep it going? And as much as I hate to say it, I think that you might want to consider, and I think I may have even heard a rumor, that you might be considering taking out the lodging portion just until you can secure some grants so that you're at least meeting the basic need of the food. I know it's not...
Right.
We'd love to see lodging. Even that was, I was impressed by how little the number was, knowing what the need is. But I don't know how you could sustain lodging when you're struggling just with food.
Well, the thing is, is that we only provide the services on very cold days typically. Two a month is what we give people, the chance to shower. In colder months, they get about one time a month where they can shower if they're homeless. But my concern is that these people would freeze, you know, and, you know, that's a real concern that, you know, they typically come on extremely cold or very, very rainy wet days. I know that when I first came there, it was extremely cold, and we had a very late, you know, winter this year, so our demand was even higher than usual. And we don't, we cover like the smallest little bit of the demand that's actually out there. We could be doing so much more, but we just don't have the funds to do that. So that was my only concern, was the freezing in the winter.
I agree. And as I said this, you know, my, I feel the tug on the heart because, you know, every year, I myself have paid on cold nights to put people in lodging because it just, it doesn't seem right to see, go home to a warm bed.
Right.
Knowing that someone's sitting there despite whatever the issues may be. But I also want to see the Food Bank survive, and you are a food bank first and foremost. So I think that it's really important to make sure that you also survive. And so it may be that maybe you should consider, when you're focusing on the lodging portion, maybe looking at grants that specifically target lodging. I know that the county's struggling financially, but lean on and get those in the community to lean on our supervisors. I mean, we pay for county services, and homelessness services are something that is built into the budget, and Willets doesn't receive much of, much support at all. So I would say, and I will be advocating on your half, every time I meet with supervisor Hasek and others, you know, we want some support services for homelessness in our community. But I just want to see that if this council decides to give direction to support the Food Bank, that they really focus on that piece, that any money and support isn't quickly drained from the lodging and is kept for food.
Yes.
Yeah. Those are my thoughts.
I guess the concern I have, and first let me start off by saying, and I told you before the meeting, my wife and me support the Food Bank every year, as well as the Senior Center. So, and I was happy that in our ARPA funding, we were able to give to both you and the organization and the Senior Center as a city. But I guess before, I guess my direction would be to the city manager. I support, like the mayor, and probably if ARPA is the way we go, because if we go ARPA, then we're going to deprogram some money that we were intending to do for something else. And it's like anybody's budget, I'm going to do this or that. You do provide a good service, but I'm a little concerned that, again, the ball was dropped at some point. I know it's not your fault, you walked into this. But I guess we are also stewards of the people's money, and whether ARPA came from the feds to us, we're still responsible for that money. And whether in our own city budget, we're responsible for that money for the people. And so while you provide a service, I guess I want some safeguards to make sure that the money is well spent and that, and I'm not going to tell you, don't spend it on housing, don't spend on this. I'm not going to tell you how to run your organization. I think it's one where I just want to make sure that there's accountability for any money that you get, especially since this coming. It's every year, we, in the past, we've struggled financially, and we were in a position this year that we were going to give you $5,000, and then the ARPA came up for that, and we thought we can give you more. So I thought we were doing pretty good, being able to give you $30,000. Granted, $25 was a one-time deal, but, and obviously, we can't do the $200,000. I mean, that's not realistic. If we'd have been on board sooner, if your board had contacted us sooner and said we had, we're struggling, you know, we could have come to some sort of meeting of the mind sooner. At this point, it's almost like, help us out. And I don't mean to sound like I'm chastising you, but I just kind of want to know where I'm kind of struggling with this is, yeah, I want to give you something, but I want to make sure that we keep cracking, we spend...
Well, I think, you know, I've talked to Brian about this, you know, we want to be as transparent as possible, and, you know, I gave him a copy of our budget, and, you know, I can come here, you know, on a regular basis and give him regular updates on how we're doing and if those grants do come in. You know, and I think it's a perfect storm, you know, I don't think anybody necessarily dropped the ball. I just think that, you know, when you're talking about, you know, grant cycles and things, they're very tricky. But more than even that, you know, between the increase, I mean, we went from 80 households to 180 households, which is unprecedented, you know. And then, you know, with our donations being about a fourth of what they normally are because of the economy, you know, this is also impacting us greatly. If those two things hadn't happened, you know, I think we would be, you know, wouldn't even be here.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, the demand on the services is what has really been, you know, because our staff has had to go back and forth and get the food, and, you know, we're getting, you know, almost three times as much food as we had because, like I said, with numbers like 197 households per day of lining up getting food, it's a lot of food that we're handing out per day. Because those households have typically three to six people in their households.
No, I know you're doing good work. It's just, again, if we had an unlimited purse to give you or convey, we have it completely, I think we, I think there's nobody up here that would say, don't give you any money.
Well, and I think too, I'm very driven by, you know, keeping our operational costs, you know, as low as possible. I've been able to turn programs around cost-wise. The last program I stepped into, they were really failing, and then it was like the number one producer. So it's where I've really excelled at. So, you know, and like I said, being as transparent, I don't want to take $1 more than we need from the city. You know, we've been trying to cut labor costs, we've been trying to cut, you know, we've cut our food costs significantly. We've done as much as I can possibly do. I've had mentors look at it and say, okay, you know, we're looking at other ways of keeping our accounting costs down, you know. So we've really examined everything that we possibly can to get a bare bones budget. Most food banks that are heading about this are like $500,000 to $750,000, and you can see our budget is coming in way lower than that. So we're able to do amazing things with a very low budget, it's just that we're struggling at this time.
I think the Food Bank is doing really good, hard work. You have a large number of volunteers, and I don't believe that you dropped the ball. I believe that COVID happened, and the economy's declined, contributions have gone down, demand for service has gone up, and we're seeing the impacts of it. As you look back through your budget, it's very obvious when you look at the number of households that you're serving and your decline in, or your increase in expenses. It's not just about your revenue base, it's your expenses and being able to sustain that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing me. I really appreciate it.
I would like to really say that we all are aware of what you guys do, and I just, I don't know how I would do it if I were you, but we'll do the best we can to come up with, but the food is this one thing that we really need to stay with, and I don't know how many people that you board or whatever that you lodge, but the food is the main thing for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would personally think that it was reasonable to look at the ARPA funds and see what we could carve out. At one point, we had talked about making a donation to EDFC, and that was tabled by the council, perhaps, and that was a $25,000 donation. Perhaps we could revisit whether or not that hasn't already been absorbed into one of the other projects and maybe think about moving that towards the Food Bank for this one-time situation. I agree with the comments that the mayor made, and I have no doubts that the Food Bank is doing everything they can to get through this rough patch, and I think that you'll, you'll get there. It sounds like you're doing all the right things. So I don't believe that this is a, an ask for a continual support. It's a one-time thing. But I do worry about the precedent it could set for the city council, for other organizations in our community who might need help, and so we do have to be mindful of that as well. The ARPA funds are a one-time thing that were intended for helping our community through difficulties because of COVID, and I think that we can easily say that this is a situation that COVID exacerbated. So that would be my recommendation, that we look seriously at those ARPA funds and see how much we could carve out of those to help with this.
All right. With that, I'm going to open it up to the public. If you have, if you'd like to speak or ask a question on this item, you're welcome to step up to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
All right. Hearing none, we'll bring it back here. You've got directions, so it sounds like three of us, maybe four?
Yeah, I'm for it. I just, I just want to make sure that, Brian, what we kick off that list is that recommendation comes back.
So the game plan is, at the next meeting, I will bring a revise, I'll bring the adopted ARPA project list with where the funding allocations went, and then maybe some recommendations. I'll work with the staff and see where maybe a project can be shaved a little bit. There was a contingency built into that. I think it's like less than $40,000, so it's not going to cover. And I don't want to tap into that because that's kind of cover anything, overages on other projects, but I think one or two projects can be reevaluated if that's the council's pleasure to provide the services or the funding to support the services.
I would definitely support that, and I would like, I would also be interested in looking at projects that potentially are already identified for ARPA and seeing if maybe there's a possibility of a fit that's in line with Measure K and what was approved by the voters as intent for purpose of those funds. So we'll be able to decide, could we still do that project under Measure K, or is it something we just have to remove and just not be able to do at all?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely an option. You have two sources, but I think, like we all commented on, the ARPA is probably the easiest one to make the adjustments, because a lot of those projects are a little bit, I wouldn't say are grounded as the Measure K projects, but some of them were a little farther stretched because those are projects were deferred or they were wish lists that were far out there, you know, further away from our core values and concerns.
And American Rescue Plan funds are doing the intent, it's right in line with that.
Brian, do you need an actual motion tonight?
No, I think the consensus is very loud, very clear.
You feel like you have clear direction?
And we'll get that to you.
20 seconds, please.
Yeah, I have to ask you to step up here.
20 seconds. My name's Carol Orton. I've been sitting on the Food Bank Board since 19...
I'm old. My God, I'm old. 1979 or '80, somewhere in there, with a few days off here and there to go to school. I just want you to know that we've never come to you before, ever. And there has been a substantial mistake made in the midst of this year we're living in right now, and none of us on the board had any idea that it was happening. And so I just want to let you know, sometimes things go on that you don't know about, and I'm sure as board members yourselves, you've had opportunities to experience suddenly having the bottom pulled out from under. And the goodness of how life works is that someone such as Kim found us because of, suddenly we needed to find somebody new, and she found us, and we found her, and she's here, and she's been with us and battling this quietly. And I really appreciate you're listening to her carefully. You're going to know us better because we will come back. We will come back to thank you, and we will come back to let you know how we're doing. This is the most intense, I am a social worker in our community, have been for a long, long time. This is the most intense food situation that I've ever observed, and I really don't want to walk away from it. I thought I was going to retire from this too, but I'm not going to do that. And other folks, you're going to meet them too, and I won't tell you who they are. It'll be so exciting because each of us will give you a little bit of wow, thank you for your help. I really appreciate it. We will come out from underneath this. There are local grantors who have really boosted us for years and years, enough so that they called us to say, where are you? But it wasn't in a timely fashion, like they didn't know, you know, that we were slip-sliding until six weeks had passed, and then they realized something's missing here. And so a little bit of phone calls, a little bit of conversations, and thank heavens, Kim showed up pretty much at that time, and away we go. We're doing the best we can. But they don't, they don't just any more than you. They don't make decisions in five seconds and send you money because they like you. You have to go through the process, and we are in that process, and I expect that we'll be coming back to tell you that we're doing much better and blah, 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 blah. Thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Carol, can I say something? You've actually have come to the city in the past in the form of Jim Merrill.
Oh, excuse me. You're totally correct, and I've come here with him.
And I've worked with Jim before as the police chief, and we partnered before. I guess that's where, and again, that's why I didn't want to cast...
He was a founding father, mother.
Yeah. And so I wanted to point out that I didn't want to cast blame on you, but somewhere, and again, I didn't mean to drop the ball like, oh my God, but I want to say the ball got dropped because we partnered with you in the past. I partnered with Jim at the police department, and we've worked on projects before.
Yes, thank you.
And so I know that we've been a good partner, and in the grant writing, I think as a city, we could be a good partner because sometimes grants require collaboration.
Yes.
And I would, you know, extend out to your grant writers, whatever that you work with us, but you have come before. And Jim was pretty good about coming when we would, sometimes I think there was years where we were only able to do 100 as a city. And in those days, I wasn't on the council, I was sitting as police chief. Other times, you know, a lot of times, he said, look, just give me something so that I, when we apply for our grants, we can show that we're collaborating. And that's why I thought this year, boy, we're doing real good as a city, we can give you some money, and then to hear this was happening. So I do want to point it out that we are willing to help, but it's a situation where I don't think we're going to be the savior.
Oh, no, no, no. I don't think you are either. No, no, no. Yeah, I guess I really wanted to attest the fact that there are ongoing sources that are now hoping, I mean, I keep talking to God. I believe that we will be seeing things, but they don't move at my rate of speed. I need it today, not yesterday.
And again, personally, if there's anything I can do, I reached out to your last director and never heard, I said, hey, if there's anything we can do with the city. When I wrote my check to the Food Bank last, this last December, I said, is there anything we can do? That's why it's a little frustrating, you know, afterwards, it's like, whoa, it's kind of like the Titanic sunk and they never sent out the SOS. You know, we would have been, and I don't want you to sink, none of us do.
The other excitement, of course, is that we have moved into a brand-new setting, and it's been a very frightening, truthfully, circumstance, but it's all worked out, thank heavens.
I was watching your traffic today.
It's worked out, and it's exquisite. And if you are bored one day, you can walk from here to over there, where, you know, you can come in and say, how do you do on a Wednesday or a Friday? And if you're really lucky, you might see somebody delivering food on a Tuesday, you could... You could follow them right in and say, what's going on? Let me see what it looks like. We did have a tiny open house, and that was mostly to welcome Kim. You've heard enough from me. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I think today, the Food Bank has had an opportunity to, a light's been shined on the need in the community. And I'm feeling hopeful that as this gets out in the newspaper and the news, that people say, you know what? I haven't made my contribution. Let me make that contribution. Let me see what I can do. So hopefully, our community will surround the Food Bank with love and money. As a financial support. Okay. Anything else for you, City Manager?
No, Madam Mayor, that is it for the evening for myself.
All right. Good topics of discussion. All right. We're going to move on to department recommendations. These are potential action items. The first one is a presentation of the annual groundwater report and discussion of continued use of groundwater under the current groundwater operational use policy and provide direction on potential water modeling efforts. Who's representing? Walter Colly.
Madam Mayor and City Council. Today, we have a presentation of the 2324 Annual Groundwater Report for the City of Willets. And EBA Engineering will be presenting a PowerPoint presentation. I believe we have Brian Wallace here.
Did you never met face-to-face?
Totally seen it earlier.
Okay.
And just so you know, if you came here for another matter and you're feeling awkward about getting up and leaving, you're always welcome to get up and leave at any time. But we also appreciate you staying and being informed.
Hey, good evening.
So Randy, can I explain something? The microphone doesn't, it's for the folks in TV land out there in the recording. Not, doesn't augment their voice here.
But before you start, that is something that I was going to ask and request, is could we get a second microphone put up at the podium so that people can hear better within the area?
We are actually working on trying to find a speaker that will work in this room. So as soon as I'm able to look...
We're working on it.
We are working on it.
Okay. So speaker, if you could just speak nice and loud.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very, very much for having me. This will be our second presentation of the annual groundwater report. And I just really wanted to say thank you to City Council, Mayor, and City Manager for the opportunity to be up here and speak to you again.
You're going to have to speak up, sir.
Okay.
Randy, do you want to move closer?
Randy, move to the front if you'd like. There's seats up here.
So how do I control it? Does...
The mouse. I think if you click it...
Okay, just click the mouse. Okay.
Just click the mouse or roll it on the roll.
Okay, thank you. So today, we're going to go over the groundwater operational use plan. We're going to look at where the wells are that we're talking about, project location, and a site map. We're going to go over the groundwater pumping totals that were pumped by the city this year. We're going to go over monitoring well hydrographs. A hydrograph shows the groundwater level in the well over time. We're going to look at the water quality data that came out of the well and went through the groundwater treatment plant. And then we're going to talk about conclusions and recommendations. So the groundwater operational use plan was adopted by the city, and it provides allowable circumstances for groundwater pumping. So that's when is it appropriate for groundwater to be pumped, for instance, to provide augmented water supply. Water supply primarily comes from two reservoirs. It also goes over groundwater use guidelines, which puts a cap on groundwater pumping at 8 million gallons per month. It goes over groundwater level monitoring requirements, which generally include the hydrographs and just looking at what those groundwater levels are in the monitoring wells. It has a requirement for the annual groundwater report, which is what this presentation is all about today. It has water quality testing requirements, looking at the concentrations of arsenic, manganese, and iron in the water. And then it also calls for a review of the groundwater operational use plan every year to see if it needs to be modified. So the project site is shown here in a little yellow shape. And it's called out with that red label there. It's north of the City of Willets, approximately two to three miles and a little bit out in the west. And it's out in a country that's, you know, cattle grazing and there's some elk out there. But, you know, generally farmland. And we're going to zoom into that little yellow shape. And now north is going to the left on the screen. This year, we are incorporating data from Menasino County Resource Conservation Wells. They shared their data with us. And the data is truncated because they had change in staffing, so they didn't have the same person to go out and do the groundwater measurements. But we still have some data from these wells. Those are shown in green dots on this map. In the red box is the Elias Replacement Well, which is the pumping well. And then adjacent to that, there's a monitoring well called the Elias Test Well that we, there's a groundwater measurement system in there, and it's about 50 feet away, and it looks at what the groundwater levels are. And it can show how, when the production well gets pumped, how the groundwater's levels are changing in about 50 feet away in the same area underground. And then also up into the right, still inside that yellow shape, there's two other red dots, and that's the Long 20 Test Well Deep, which is drilled to a depth of 200 feet. And then Long 20 Well Shallow, which is 17 and a half feet deep. And that shows, the deep one is in the same aquifer zone as the pumping well and the Elias Test Well that's right next to it. So those are all kind of in the same zone. And you can see that those groundwater levels match each other. But then in the shallow well, it's not in the same zone anymore. It's more higher up. It's shallow. It's in a clay-y kind of environment. And that's just a different kind of scenario. So we can look at, is pumping the Elias Replacement Well going to affect the shallow one, or is it going to affect the deep one? And now we also have these green dots that we can look at for the first time and see how pumping is affecting those or if it is or not.
Real quick?
Yeah.
Are the MCRCE wells shallow or deep?
They're both. And I'll go over the depths as well of those. So the pumping well, we have data provided on a monthly basis. And please note that the, this report's dates start on April 15, 2023, and then go to April 14, 2024. So that's the period that we look at. And here, you can see that it was pumped from April through July. And that none of the extractions exceeded the 8 million gallon cap. And then production stopped. So I use the word production instead of pumping sometimes because I'm a groundwater, you know, nerd or whatever. But pumping stopped in August. And that's because the clarifier, the surface water treatment plant, was repaired. So there was enough surface water going into the system that the well wasn't needed anymore. So that's that. Is there any questions about these, this slide? So now we're going to start looking at the hydrographs. And we're going to start out at the Elias Test Well, which is the monitoring well. It's located 55 feet northeast of the pumping well. And it's drilled to a depth of 206 feet in a semi-confined aquifer. And on this, there's a picture on the right-hand side, which is a stand pipe that's four feet and four inches tall. And then on the left, there's a graph. The blue line on the graph is the groundwater level. And the gray line is the top of that pipe, the stand pipe there. And then the orange line is the ground surface on the stand pipe. So please notice that the blue line is pretty much always within those two lines. That means that the water level inside that stand pipe is, you know, it's in the stand pipe.
It's bubbling up.
Once you get up to March 2024, it's actually bubbling out of the top. But during pumping, there's a five-foot decrease in May that did go under the ground surface level a little bit. And then again, another five-foot drop in July or late June. I guess that'd be July there. So there was some pumping that occurred, you know, before they stopped pumping. But then they stopped in July, and it just slowly recovers all the way up until it starts kind of bubbling over the top. So that's the Artesian well. When they drilled it, the driller noted asterisk, 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 Artesian. So that was just kind of like a cool thing. It's not very common in the...
Could you define Artesian for everybody?
So Artesian is like if you had, like a hose, like a little hose bib on this pipe, but down below where the water is, if you just get water and have to fill up a bucket, like it's just like coming out of the ground. So Artesian wells are very desirable and very rare. So it's pretty cool to see this. Yeah, so that's Artesian. Now, we're going to look at the Long 20 Test Well Deep. That's 2,400 feet northeast, sorry, yeah, northeast of that, or southeast. And that one's drilled to 200 feet deep. And here, the groundwater levels are below the ground surface. So it's kind of hard to, let me just kind of go more into the Artesian thing really quick because you wonder why isn't it a lake if the groundwater levels are inside the pipe? But what happens is, it's in this, there's a 50-foot thick layer of clay that's kind of making it so the water can't get out of there. So it's under pressure. And it's interconnected with groundwater levels that are a lot higher in elevation up the valley to the south. So that's putting pressure on the system because you've got a higher head up, up valley, and it's just building all this pressure in there. It can't get out because it's trapped by this clay. It can't flow through the clay. So when you put a well in, then the water level will come up and get to equilibrium in there. But it can't get through the clay, so it's not a lake right now. It's still dry on the ground. Just wanted to kind of clarify that point. So Long 20 Test Well Deep, groundwater levels are not above ground surface as we go to the south, 2,400 feet. They're within a couple of feet of the ground surface. But you can still see the, you know, these are four and a half-foot drops. So they're a little bit attenuated from what you saw adjacent to the well. But still are, you know, these groundwater levels are within 10 feet of the ground surface inside that, you know, well there. And again, groundwater levels came all the way back up into almost being at ground level there in that well. Now, we're going to look at the data for the Long 20 Test Well Shallow, which is 2,400 feet southeast. And this one's 17 and a half feet deep. And here, the groundwater levels are at ground surface in April, May. And then they slowly go down about three feet to hitting bottom right around the beginning of September. And then they start to come back up with what I would anticipate being precipitation. And then you see some spikes as you're getting into November with some bigger rain events. And then it kind of comes up and flattens out of the ground surface. So there's not any big drops in formation that are similar to what we saw in the other formations. So it's not really a clear indication that this is being affected by the pumping of the other one. So now we're going to start looking at the Menasino Resource Conservation District wells. Benbow One is shown here in this box. That's located 4,730 feet southeast. And in this well, there's a decline in July of about five feet. We're not certain if that is correlated or not with the pumping. Most of the pumping, if we look at the, this one kind of happened, you see one big spike in late May, and then one in the early, start of July there. And then this data point's kind of farting around in July. So not seeing a huge correlation.
How far away did you say the Benbow well was?
This is 4,730 feet southeast. So it's shown here in that red box. So it's all the way down there by the pond.
About a mile and a half.
Yeah.
So if you see a drop like that and you don't necessarily attribute it to the pumping, you don't see the correlation, would you then just attribute it to regular seasonal changes because it's July?
Yeah. And it's also, you know, there's some, not that many wells out there, but you know, if there's some pumping happening, it may have something to do. This well is 145 feet deep, so it's potentially in the same kind of zone. But, you know, there's other stuff going on too. But yes, seasonality is definitely shown here in the shallow well. You can see it's just slowly declining.
And who's taking water from the Benbow, not the city, correct?
This one may be used for irrigation of Wetlands Mitigation Project. If you see the follow, there's a pipe coming out of it. So this one has been used historically for irrigation. So it's, they didn't say this one is used for irrigation right now, but I'm not really 100% sure.
It's not like over by the wastewater irrigation? When they take the waste, I know they irrigate it over there. Is that potentially what it's used for?
It could be. It's like kind of out in the field out there.
This is the city.
It could just be...
This is the conservation district.
Okay.
It might just be used for...
So we don't have any access to this at all?
Yeah. Okay, this one's interesting. This is well W3. In general, groundwater flows from the south to the north, so from the right to the left. So this is downstream of the pumping well. But this well, they told me, is used for cattle water. So there's, it's providing water supply for 300 or 400 cows. They drink 25 gallons a day, so up to 10,000 gallons a day. And this is primarily used in August and September for the cattle water. This is only drilled to a depth of 46 feet. So this is in the shallower zone. So if you're in more clay, the clay will not give up the water as fast as the other formation beneath it. So you can see this one dropped down, you know, like 30 feet there over that period of time when they were pumping it for the cows. So that was interesting. But still not any correlation between the pumping from the Elias Replacement Well because that was more in May, in June, July, not really in September at all.
And this one, the data drops out because you have the changes personnel at...
Yeah, they just didn't have staff to do the monitoring. Okay, E9 is all the way at the top. That one is located 6,200 feet southeast. And this is a well that's used to provide water supply for residents and potentially for irrigation. When I was there, that well was on, and the pump was on in the well. So I know that that one's used. And this one had a drop of about 12 feet that bottomed out in September. And then finally, W7, shown here in the red box, is located about 2,500 feet southwest. This is an irrigation well. They were using it to irrigate this year for the Wetlands Mitigation Project. And it's 145 feet deep, so in the deeper formation. And it had a drawdown of about eight feet peeking out in September, when I guess they were using it for irrigation purposes. So we kind of get a better picture of the Menasino County Resource Conservation District wells and what they're used for. We did also get some, you know, we looked at, how does this correlate to the data that we got from the Elias Test Well that we have for monitoring the pumping? And we did not see any smoking gun with respect to anything at all. They just kind of were doing their thing up there.
The thing I noticed is that they all seem to recharge fairly quickly during the winter time. I'm wondering if they, if they recovered so well this year because we had a wet year versus maybe if we had had a dry year? If that would have skewed the numbers differently? But there's no way of knowing. But do you have any projections on...
We can, we can use the model that we're developing to look into that. Because one thing to consider is groundwater infiltration will, you know, the precipitation will infiltrate locally in the same areas of the wells slowly. And that can provide recharge right away. The biggest recharge area in this basin is to the south because of the soil characteristics are hydrologic soil group A and B, which are like the best you can have for infiltration capacity. So in the southern area, all of the precipitation is going in, providing really stable recharge into the deeper aquifer systems that's providing all that head. And then the question becomes, how long does it take for that water to get from there all the way to where we're looking? And that question is, maybe that takes like a long time. Like maybe it's not a seasonal year-to-year thing. Maybe that takes hundreds of years.
So the theory is a wet year wouldn't have impacted the recharge?
It can to some extent because the confined zone where the production well is, it's a pressurized, it's called confined, but there's still going to be some seepage of... of percolation, percolating precipitation water getting in there. And you will see some even in a confined, there's not really a true confined aquifer, but it's semi-confined. There's going to be some influences seasonally too. But I think the bigger picture is that there's also just a long-term, big chunk of water moving through the whole system.
Okay.
So that's the review of the hydrographs. And now we're going to go into the sampling results here. Kind of got a little bit of a lag on the.
Is he connecting to water rainfall at all? Waterfall, is there a hydrograph connecting it to rain?
We don't have it, you can't, not really. We don't have like a hyotograph of showing the precipitation at the same time as those, but we could look at that. But I think when you looked at the shallow one, there was little spikes on it coming back up when it was coming back to the ground surface and that was kind of indicative of some storms. So if we were to add a little histogram that showed the precipitation totals, you'd probably see him lining up with that. Other than that, I don't think we're going to see, you know, maybe it's on a big general slow rise back up. But it's not like it really has sharp changes. It kind of just gradually comes back.
Okay, you can go ahead and keep going.
This is a lot of information on one slide. We can kind of discover what this is talking about here. On the left is what quarter we're looking at. So second quarter 2023, third quarter 2023. Those quarter values are put there because the groundwater operational use plan asks to have groundwater data, water quality data presented on a quarterly basis. The next column over says constituent. That looks at, is it testing for arsenic, manganese, or iron? The next column over, sampling date, when was the sampling taken, the one where the sample's taken? Following that, the analytical method, that's the laboratory test number that is used in the lab. And then the last three columns are important. The Elias replacement well, that's the actual groundwater coming right out of the well. Then the next one over is called the groundwater treatment plant. That's what's happening once the water goes through treatment. And then finally, it's the California maximum contaminant level drinking water standard. And some of those values, most of them have an S in front of MCL. So that's a secondary maximum contaminant level. So that means that it's for odor, aesthetics, taste. It's not necessarily a health concern, but it's more about if you have too much iron in your water, it could potentially stain appliances or clothes. So that's what the secondary maximum contaminant level is, MCL. So the big picture here, um, the two columns all the way to the right, groundwater treatment plant, that's the stuff, that's the water coming out of the treatment plant. And then you can compare the concentrations there to the concentrations that the standard is. And in some of them, for instance, quarter three, 2023, there's a 1.7 there. And then the, the level that you're supposed to have is 0.05, so it's greater than that. And then down, up above manganese is 0.45 on the third row down. So that one also is too high. And what was happening is that the sample was being taken before the water had gotten to flush through the treatment plant because the treatment plant wasn't really being used. So the filter media was full of these constituents. And instead of letting it flush for 30 to 45 minutes, they just took the sample right away. So it wasn't a true sample of the actual water quality. So then after that, they realized that there was a problem there and they started to wait till it flushed through the system appropriately. And then you can see in quarter four, 2023, there's a 0.02 with a little star next to it. And that's just indicating that those levels are all back to where they should be because the system was getting flushed.
Yeah, that's very reassuring because the manganese level is above the EPA health advisory level, which if it was one milligram per liter, anyone would drink.
Yeah.
So it's very reassuring to know the sampling error and not a reduction error.
Dr. Matheson, I really appreciate your comments and I want to make sure that the people at home can hear them too when you make them. But if you make them from your chairs, they won't be able to hear. So anytime that we have a question or a follow-up, I'll have you come up and comment so that everybody can hear too.
Yeah, another thing to note too is that a lot of this, I believe all of these numbers were taken when the groundwater well was not in use. They just ran the well in order to get these samples, so it wasn't going into the system. That's my understanding. So these are mainly just like, the well wasn't on, we just needed to keep getting these numbers. So they turned it on and that's why we had the problem in the first place, I think, because it wasn't running continuously.
About how far are you through your presentation?
Probably 75%.
75%? Okay. So if you'll hold your questions in the audience, that'll give you a chance to speak. But go ahead, counsel.
So just to be clear, what you're saying is that these samples weren't water that was running through the regular Willets municipal water. This was just samples taken at the groundwater treatment plant in order to get sample.
Exactly.
But not pushed in through the rest of the system.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and keep going and I won't forget to come back.
I'm turning the thing, but. Okay.
Real quick, one more question about that last slide. So you mentioned the secondary MCL. What does it mean when it just says CA MCL?
That's the health advisory one. So that one's shown here just for arsenic. But like he mentioned, for manganese, it's, you know, I think, I think it's point, what did you think it was?
For adults, it's one milligram per liter.
One.
Infants or children, it's 0.3.
Okay, that's what I remember is 0.3. Okay. So yeah, so 0.3 would be six times the SMCL is one for children, that you could be, after long years of consumption, there would be some risks of a neurological issue, right?
So I'm not as, I'm not getting into the numbers right now.
Okay, sorry.
Because I am just trying to understand what the acronym means. But so if I'm understanding this correctly, the SMCL is secondary, meaning it's affecting taste or odor.
Exactly, yes.
Whereas if it's just a basic CA, that's where we're really concerned about a health issue.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, there was interconnectivity observed between the Elias test well that showed groundwater pumping, the long 20 test well showed the groundwater pumping. So that, those were two, the long 20 deep, there was correlation there that we saw where you could see the drawdown and they were all similar. But there was not any interconnectivity observed for any of the other wells, including the shallow, long 20 well and any of the MCRCD monitoring wells. And big picture, all of the hydrographs showed recovery of the water levels to above where they were at the beginning of the study. So robust aquifer recharge in the case in the vicinity of the pumping well, coming up to the top of the standpipe and essentially bubbling over the top. So that just demonstrates really robust, fast aquifer recovery, uh, which is a big deal. And I think the fact that Artesian's, you know, pretty, you know, awesome for this kind of aquifer compared to other places that don't have Artesian conditions. So robust aquifer system in that vicinity. Moving forward with our recommendations, we recommend putting a flow meter on the Elias replacement well that's pumping so that we can monitor how much water gets pumped through the pipe right there. That would be nice to be able to correlate, okay, here's the amount that got pumped and then here's what the drawdown looked so we can better match up how the pumping affects the aquifer and does it happen like right away or does it take a, a long time for it to happen in the different wells? So just having a little bit more information on that would be good. We can also use that information to better characterize how that aquifer system would respond to different stresses. And it's good for modeling to know those numbers. In addition, we could add a pressure transducer into the pumping well so we can see what the dynamic groundwater levels are. And that would show if it goes down, you know, does that go down a lot more right in the actual well itself compared to 50 feet away? And just understanding how that curve works would be important. And then, um, we, there's survey data that has one datum for the city of Willets monitoring wells. So we are very confident about where those are on our charts. The elevations that are shown, we're very confident about. And we know exactly where those wells are based on survey data. The MCRCD wells, Mendocino County Resource Conservation District wells, I map those with my cell phone, so that's not very accurate. And we got our elevations from Google Earth for those. And then we converted them to the same vertical datum that we have for the city wells, but it's not as accurate. So when we show the groundwater levels in those wells, those elevations don't necessarily, they're not, we're not super confident that they match up with the other wells that we do have the good data on. So it might be good to get all of those on the same datum and just kind of nail those in better so we can better defend the data that we're collecting. And then, you know, a long shot would be to provide, you know, with the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District wells, so to have flow meters on the ones so we know when they're pumping or they're not, to see how that affects their hydrograph so we can understand if that drawdown is correlated with pumping of those wells. And then to have telemetric pressure transducers in there so they're continuously providing data similar to the city-owned wells, just having a lot better data on those charts.
Can I open it up to the public or do we have any pressing questions up here?
I'll be sure.
Okay, so I'm going to have you stand just, don't go too far though because you'll probably be answering. That'd be great. Who would like to go first? We have, Dr. Matheson, did you want to ask any follow-up questions or give some comments? Because the people at home weren't able to hear you, maybe if you can make them at the podium, if you don't mind.
Mills Matheson, the physician at Willets. I was alarmed at the reports of the water sampling. They showed that the manganese levels were at an unhealthy level. But now I'm reassured that this is not a problem, it's a problem in the sampling and not in the water. And the good samples that were taken at the end showed that very low levels of manganese and of course, very low levels of arsenic, which is our biggest concern here. I wonder if you can guess when you think that well will get arsenic in it? It's just a matter of time, isn't it? 14, 15 years?
Do you want me to come up and speak to it?
Yeah, because I think that that was a question that was posed when we began doing this study is, is any of the arsenic from the other well or otherwise moving towards the Elias replacement well?
So EBA performed a phase one study where we looked at any potential human-made sources of arsenic in the valley. And we had our best environmental scientists on that project. They did a site visit. They covered all the bases and found no smoking gun whatsoever for any potential use of arsenic in any of the industry, any of the old lumber mill processes or anything. So that leads us to the conclusion that the arsenic is naturally occurring from the geology and it can be found in some of the materials that make up the bedrock Franciscan formation that slowly erodes and fills up the valleys with the fill that we have that creates water bearing units. But that being said, the transport of that, if it, if it were to be human-generated arsenic that could go into a shallow aquifer zone and somehow get into, it would be maybe potentially faster to move, but when it's in the geology, the, based on my understanding, the potential for transport of those metals is very low. It's just in the geology and at that point, we just basically stopped our particle tracking. We wanted to look at particle tracking to see if we could figure out where it was, where would it go? But if it's just inherent in the geology, which is common, my understanding based on my conversations with our hydrogeologists is that it's not going to go anywhere. It's not going to mobilize. It's just where it is. So if you hit it and you're in a well, that's, that well's going to be contaminated, but for it to transport 2,400 feet, it's not going to move at the same rate as a water molecule. It may not move at all. It's a heavy metal. So we could look into it more, but we're in the process of preparing a draft report that we'll submit for your review.
So because that arsenic is a heavy metal, it makes it difficult for it to move. But the Elias well, isn't it also in the aquifer higher, further up? And so if the arsenic did move, it would move the opposite direction? Is that still?
No, it'd come.
It would come that direction? It could potentially go that way?
Yeah, but like we hear all the time about, at least in my industry, environmental cleanup projects for dry cleaners and gasoline or diesel spills and things like that. Because those are like highly mobile contaminants, but we don't hear a lot about arsenic in those kind of situations. It's just different transport properties. So we could look more into it if we needed to, but at this point, finding that it's just occurring in the geology really, in my opinion, lowers the risk of it potentially transporting it just already kind of where it is.
All right. All right, Jerry.
I'll add a question. We're testing quarterly, right? And so do you, based on what you're seeing, you don't see any reason to test more frequent?
Yeah, I mean, no.
Sure.
Yeah. I think sometimes you get, sometimes it may happen more frequently, maybe not, but yeah, I think, you know, if there was a big concern, you could always put in a Sentinel well in between them and then do quarterly testing and that.
It sounds like our biggest issue was just how we were taking our samples then. And then after that, then, once we have a, basically a procedure that, that you're telling us to do it, then we should get a truer reading then.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's coming up non-detect here and I, I really don't think that it's just going to mobilize. It's not like a huge, another thing to think about too is there's, you know, groundwater's flowing all the time through this aquifer. It's got its own gradient that's moving through. So when this pump turns on, it might drop the local area's groundwater level a little bit, but it's already still flowing through. It's always going to be flowing through. So, you know, if it's been flowing like that for millions of years, why is the arsenic staying where it is?
Who's next? I would like to step up. Karamov, if you want to go next and then behind you.
Yeah, I'm Karamov and I'm very confused about these laboratory results. I guess I don't understand them because we've been, the city has been doing water testing results for years, every year. And we get the groundwater and the arsenic, the manganese, the, uh, the iron and all. And all of a sudden, here we have a new one and for a whole quarter of this, these are flawed samples, if I hear what you're saying. They're defective samples because someone did not do sampling correct. And we've been doing sampling for years and we've been doing it wrong all along? Or more of a question is why are these even in here if they don't reflect the actual situation of the water? Why don't we go back and add a different quarter since, since the bogus, not the word I'm looking for, but meaningless numbers, if I understand it? Is that correct? So why are we even looking at those numbers?
Well, we wouldn't want them left out.
As opposed to going back and doing it correctly, I mean. Well, we can't go back. Now you know we can't go back in Canada.
I guess that comes down to how long does it take to get the sampling report? Maybe that quarter had passed before we received the report. I don't know. That's a question for.
I guess I don't know why it's even in here if it's not a valid number.
They were re-sampled. Did they, should we switch? Yeah.
Anyway.
It makes sense.
Thank you, Bear.
So my understanding is that these numbers are put here because they're, they were part of the requirements of the groundwater operational use plan. So since they were required, we put the numbers in even though they were potentially ill-representative of the actual water that was going through the system. And then they did sample it properly. They came back and redid it in quarter four, and that's where you got the data that was better.
I think his question was, if you had a bad sample in quarter three, why didn't you just go back and re-sample in quarter three? Is it because it takes a while to get the report?
Yeah, it takes a long time to get the lab results back. So it probably took a while for them to even realize that there was a problem.
I guess my question is why are you, why do you need to show them here?
Because the groundwater operational use plan says we have to show them, so we're just putting them over there.
Transparency.
And, and maybe what Barry, you were talking about, we test our water, is it yearly, Scott?
No.
We don't?
All kinds of.
Those reports, I think those, we get those reports about our water system. Is that sampling of the?
Scott, let's just step up.
Of course, Scott can sit next to Manny and he can move the mic.
That would work too.
I guess I'm talking about the consumer one that goes out.
Yeah, the consumer confidence report is annually, and that's the test group. We take representative samples, usually in the winter. I think we did in April this year.
And those don't come from groundwater? Those come from, where do you take those at?
Surface water.
Surface water, okay. So those are probably the ones you're used to seeing, but these were taken from the well. And apparently, when we were taking those samples, we weren't doing it right and letting it run. We just kind of turned on the tap out there and then shutting it down. And we got our sample and came back.
Yeah.
All right. I believe you had a, you were next.
I'm Rosamund Crowder. And I'm also concerned about arsenic migrating from the area where the Long 20 is to the Elias well. And I understand there wasn't any pumping after August of 2023. So in a lot of ways, a one-year report doesn't really show what's going on in my mind when you're not pulling the water from the aquifer. And the Long 20 and the Elias are both in the deep aquifer. And deep aquifers, it's a confined aquifer. Am I correct about that? And then this study that you're doing is actually modeling how arsenic moves. But you're kind of, you've said that you don't think arsenic moves at all. And I find that hard to believe. And because I know water in a confined aquifer moves. And we also know that when the Elias well was pumped, it did affect the Long 20. And yes, it got recharged quickly, but it definitely showed the same markings, which means there's a cone and it's moving. So I can't see why arsenic wouldn't also move with the water. So those are my concerns. And I'm, I'm not really clear how the monitoring, the, putting a monitor on how the wells are going up and down, if that actually is part of the modeling of how water is moving in the aquifer. I think it's a whole separate issue. Am I correct about that?
Should we switch now?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you very much for your questions. So there was a couple of them in there. One of them was, does the study, I think the study was more focused on where's the arsenic coming from, more so than us trying to like model the arsenic itself. We had, we had one part of the study that might look at particle tracking analysis, but that would be for a particle of water, not for a particle of arsenic. So it was just a very, the rudimentary, like, what direction does a water particle go? And thinking about groundwater flow, the water's moving through sands, gravels, silt. It's not just flowing in like a big cave. So it's full of all these particles everywhere. So thinking about transport of a heavy metal through all of those, you know, all of those different rocks and sands and all these things, this is moving along. It's a lot different than if it was just flowing through like a concrete pipe or down a stream. So there's a lot of stuff in the way to impede flow of that particle, movement of that particle of arsenic. So it's a very dynamic modeling exercise to try to characterize what is that really transport like. So that would be out of the scope of what we looked at initially, which was just, is there human sources of arsenic? And if a water particle were to move, that's a quicker calculation, cheaper to do. It's not like a full-blown transport model, which is very complicated and takes a lot of effort to try to make it represent reality in this kind of aquifer with the properties that we have. So I hope that touched some of your questions. Then you wanted to correlate, does the water levels going up here, how does that correlate to the arsenic transport problem?
The proposal, the proposal on the floor is about putting telemetric gizmos.
Flow meters.
And I don't think, I'm getting that that's not really related in any way to the movement of arsenic.
Yeah, it's more, you're right. It's more about understanding it from a water supply perspective. And what's the overall picture of sustainability with respect to water supply? Is there a lot of water here? Is, you know, is the pumping of this well affect water supply, up gradient, down gradient, to the sides? How far, where do we see this drawdown happening? It's more from concerns about water supply, I think, than it is just about the arsenic problem or lack of a problem.
And the Long 20 would show a drop during those summer months because remember, we do have people that are coming and pumping water from the Long 20 for road construction projects and such, which is why it's also dropping at the same time that the Elias is, because they're being utilized more during those periods of time. All right, go ahead,
John Almeida. I have a well in this valley. I've been concerned about the issues of arsenic in the wells from the past. And I've also talked on webinars involving water projects in other places. My understanding, when this first started as a project, that you had a contaminated city well with arsenic. The Long 20 well was contaminated, but the Elias well was not contaminated with arsenic. What I'm seeing in the report tonight is that the same level of contamination in the Long 20 well is in the Elias well now. And when I spoke to a consultant to the California Water Resources Board, his name's Jim Sullivan, I asked the question, if you draw, if you pump a well hard, can you break loose geological arsenic and have that contaminate your system? And he says, yes, that can happen. So it depends on how hard you pull that well, how hard you draft that water. And the other concern I have is, you have an environmental group who wants to start tapping into our centennial reservoir for the fish. And they may be looking at it like, hey, you guys got some wells now, go use them and let us have some more of your water. And I'm going like, if you start drawing that, you could contaminate everybody's well in this valley. Because before, I had no idea that there was any arsenic in the Elias well. It was like two were contaminated, one wasn't. And I thought it was kind of funny then, because when you're pulling from the same aquifer, and it looks like the Long 20 and the Elias are pulling from the same aquifer, and if there's contamination, I had said it before, if you've got contamination in one, even if you don't have contamination in the other, and you pull that real hard, you're going to break something loose there. And that was confirmed by Jim Sullivan, who's a consultant. And I'm concerned about that, being I have a well.
If I could follow up with the fact that the city did put in place a policy on how much water we were pulling from there. And we have been getting quarterly reports. And we haven't been pulling hard from, from either of the wells. We've been conservative. And we could have the consultant or city manager or somebody from staff that could give a brief summary, if you like. And we have reports that you could get from City of Willets as well, that talk about how much water usage we're allowing. And it's actually gone down pretty significantly for the 20, for the, for the amount of water that's being pumped out of the ball fields. It's gone down significantly.
Well, my comment's precautionary, because we have more demands and we got to watch what we do out there.
I think we agree to that. Sir, did you want to follow up with?
Yeah. Sir, confused. So you said that what you saw today shows that there's arsenic in the Elias well.
So it says right there.
So that number with the carry 0.002 is like a non-detect. So that does not mean that there's arsenic in that well. That's just what the data from the lab shows. That is not indication of any arsenic in the system. That's just what, that means there's none.
000?
That's, that's a non-detect value. That's what you, that's what the lab says. That's what we have to report. But that's what you're going to get on anything that has no arsenic found at all. That does not indicate arsenic.
It's less than .002, which is like, nothing.
I know they have recording quantities the state requires. But actually is there, that they consider it nothing?
Yeah, it's like...
But if you draft it hard enough, and there's evidence that there is some, you could break it loose.
Yeah, but that's a very complicated mathematical modeling problem to be able to characterize. Okay, if we do look at that, you know, is it going to move 10 feet? Is it going to move 25, 2,400 feet over, how long is it going to take? Is it going to take a million years?
My concern is, how fast is it going to move through the pipe to the water system?
Yeah, but I think, you know, you could call a guy at the state and he said, yeah, it's going to happen. But nobody's done the study to actually characterize that issue in this basin. And the fact that it's already in the geology, already going up against groundwater flow all the time. This is a very robust aquifer that's artesian. So if you've got some drawdown, it's five feet, which is pretty de minimis when the groundwater at the bottom of that aquifer is down 200 feet.
Does the city still hold the same aquifer?
Yeah.
Well, it's contaminated enough that you can't use it for city water.
Well, I think if they, there's a potential for groundwater treatment still with the levels that it's at.
Groundwater treatment doesn't do well with arsenic.
Well, we do have, actually, it's, that's why I'm designing with arsenic. It's manganese dioxide media when you add ferric chloride. We had it modeled from our State Water Resources Board and gave us the dosage to get it adopted.
Do we have anybody else from the public that would like to address this? Randy?
I find this a very interesting conversation because my husband, for his senior thesis at the Houston University of California, we studied 32 wells. And we studied the permeability and the percolation, the soils from Casper to Leightonville, to Stockton, to Alamo, 32 different wells, the permeability, the percolation. And we were, my son, Johan, who's still here, he's 50 now, did a report for his senior high school report. And he had difficulty accessing the information on the monitoring wells for the Leightonville dump. We tried to get, they had five different wells, and they capped them off because they didn't want the public to have access to the information. Some were 50 feet, some were 100 feet. So access to the information is key. I think we need to be conscious and aware that if it is contaminated, you know, we should probably have a department or an area here in Willets to keep current information as well as a baseline of information of how it goes back from whenever it is that you started taking tests, you know, from the original. I also know, but have not heard anybody talk about REMCO and the radioactive contamination that lasts for 100,000 years. This was something they were putting in the, we had a superfund site in Leightonville that was the fifth in the state that needed to be cleaned up. And that was the one that my son, we studied for a year. And I typed up the papers. And we typed up the different, iron has also been mentioned. I would like to bring up the iron quality of our water wells up in Leightonville. I had a well on the property. We couldn't, the water was not potable. It was not drinkable. We could use it for irrigation for the plants in the garden, but it was not usable for the families, for the children, or for the adults. It could not be used, it was not potable. So I'm an experienced person as far as a little bit of knowledge. I'm not, I still have a degree or diploma. I've done a lot of reading and following. And I think it's very important that you're bringing this out tonight to be discussed openly. But I think open information, prevention is key. What happens if, I'm concerned about the Potter Valley and the attempts of Sonoma County to take, you know, from the south fork of the Eagle River. If they're cutting off the dams, if this is a long-range impact, that we need to be, and the Russian River attempt to take water from the Potter Valley, it's going to impact the wineries and the customer use in another county. It's a larger, it's a, there's a large picture and there's a little picture. You know, we have to...
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, we have to protect Willets. I live here. And what about the groundwater? What happens when you can't use or drink the water here in town for residents because the water's discolored? I have children.
Thank you, Randy.
And I have grandchildren. And I think that this is a continuing problem that's going to have to be addressed. There are limits to growth. You can't just have unlimited growth.
Well, I think that this particular report is in fact, it's progress.
Oh, absolutely. I think it's wonderful.
That this study is done so that we can get, so they can get information. And then...
Yeah, I'm grateful for the opportunity to follow up.
Thank you.
To continue with my...
And then I just want to remind you all, before our next speaker goes, that what's before us is, what the city has presented as a recommendation is for us to continue use of groundwater under our current groundwater operational use plan with modifications and provide direction, which is what we're need to do tonight, to provide direction on adding groundwater monitoring equipment. So we're really discussing, do we want to add more groundwater monitoring equipment? That's the decision that's before this council this evening. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Larry Aguilera again. I just want to say, when I turn my tap water on and drink some of that water, does that mean it's only been tested one time in a, per quarter? So four times a year?
I'll turn that over to Scott.
No, we test, we, in different zones, yeah, it's steadily regulated.
Good.
I have one critical thing. If there is a contamination, is there any kind of emergency well or something that can add fresh water to reduce the contamination?
I think that is probably a whole separate issue. But if you could follow up with, Walter, would you be the best person? No, Scott, would you be the best person to connect with? Yeah, if you could connect with Scott, because that's probably a broader subject. All right. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Nikki Caltholme, and I have a question. When you talk about the MCRCD, that is the Mendocino County wells that is there. Now, are we being asked that the city is paying for more monitoring on the Mendocino County wells? Or is Mendocino County taking over the cost?
That's a potential recommendation.
Right. Or, so I would be against that, just because I think the county should be doing their part and being part of that and not us paying the part of that.
Those, that's Mendocino County Resource Conservation District, RCD is like a nonprofit organization. I'm not certain to, if it's a department of the county itself. I don't think it is. I think it's, it's not. So it's a nonprofit organization. And I'm not recommending that the city necessarily pay for that all out of pocket or not. I'm not sure how that would work out. But that's just, more data there would be good, is what the recommendation, the bottom line is.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back up to the council to give direction to the city manager as to what we would like to do on the side. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You know, I support the recommendations. Obviously, I don't know what the mechanism would be for us, for the mitigation areas, as far as, I think we owe it to our ratepayers. We owe it to our city to do as best a study as we can do. Obviously, I would love for the county, I've said it to our supervisor before, to do more out in the valley floor as far as groundwater. But we can only ask so much of the county. And if they're not going to do their part, we can do our part. and if they're not going to do their part, we can do our part. And in this case here, they're letting us study their wells as part of our study. I think that we ought to, obviously within budgetary constraints, look at what we can do to get the best data we can get. That's just my thought.
I'd like to, I'd like to give direction that we do items one and two, which are install a telemetric flow meters on the Elias replacement well, as well as on the groundwater monitoring well. I'd like to give direction that we put it on a future agenda to do those two things with a cost attached to it, because obviously we need to know how much is cost before we take action on it. But I would support those with items three and four, that were in the potential recommendations. I would think that we would hold off on those and, one, get some costs, and then, two, find out if this nonprofit would be willing to partner with us in monitoring their wells further. Any other recommendations?
I would recommend actually one, two, and three. I think that as far as surveying the MCRD, MCRCD wells, that is something that the city could undertake because we're benefiting from the data from those wells. I think that as far as asking them to actually install water meters, that is something that I would rather see them sort the bill for than the city, but-
You make a good argument, I would agree with that as well.
Okay. And then the other thing, I just wanted to say that I initially voted no for the groundwater treatment plan, I was very concerned about the use of groundwater and how it would impact our valley, and just the environmental implications of using groundwater was something that I was very troubled by. But I am relieved to see that the city has been conservative in its use. We limited how much we drew, it was used for essential things like flushing the water system, which helps reduce groundwater citywide, and, and so I'm gratified by that. As far as including data that potentially was, or was incorrectly sampled, I'm also relieved by that because I see that there was a correction made. So we learned from, from what we were doing, and now we're doing it right. So I'm glad that that's there because they didn't hide it, they didn't say, oh, we didn't, we forgot to take samples. They did what they were supposed to do, they learned from the mistake, and now we're in a good position. So I appreciate the recommendations, I think it's important to continue gathering the information, and I'm glad to see how we're moving forward.
Councilmember Stransky, do you want to give different direction, or do you agree?
I like, I like Greta's, the one, two, and three.
You know, I would, I would like to move Greta's recommendation, but with the, with the idea that we get a cost on four, so that we can make a learned decision.
We would get a cost, but the, but the recommendation isn't necessarily that we pay for it. Are you clear on direction?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your participation, public as well, it's very important to-
Do you have a motion?
You bring up good things, and-
Uh, let's-
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to take a-
Let's have a motion since you're asking for specific action.
So I'll go with my original motion, which is to go with Greta's recommendation of one, two, and three with a comeback with a cost on four. Do I have a second?
I'll second your motion, unless Greta wants to.
I think that what we originally indicated though, as Suprema said, was that we wanted a cost recommendation on all three of those before we voted a yes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
And then on four, it would also be good to have a price recommendation so that we have it-
All right, then I will take it back, that I would like a cost recommendation and then come back at a later meeting on all of those.
That was part of mine.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Are you clear, city clerk?
A cost recommendation on all, all items?
All items with priority on one, two, and three.
Three.
We're not allocating any funds at this time, we're just asking that it come back before council.
Not only, not only the course would be presented, but also what the results of seeking out cooperation from the conservation district as well.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote.
Can you remind me who did the second?
Uh, Greta.
Greta.
Thank you. Councilman Connie, yes, Stransky-
Yes.
Gonzalez-
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. All right, the motion carries four, zero, with direction.
I want to thank you very much for doing this, of course, thank you.
Can I please come up and ask one clarification question?
Yeah.
Your presentation, for, at least for myself, was very, very clear, sometimes it can be a little difficult. I'm still learning about water, I've been learning about water since the day I got on the council and trying to understand it, and I felt like the terms that you were using and, and it just, I was able to follow you, I hope that others felt the same.
Thank you very much. Should I reach out to the Meniscino County Resource Conservation District at all, or no?
You're going to coordinate with Walter and Scott, there is, the law, move it along.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, we're going to, we're going to take a short five-minute recess, we still have quite a bit of business before us, so come back here at 8:53, please. We still have quite a bit of business before us. If we could let the people in the hall know that we're back in session?
That's okay, I don't want to get confused.
All right, it's 8:58, we are back in session. The next order of business we have before us is item 9B, to adopt a resolution awarding a contract to Argonaut Construction in an amount not to exceed 1.120,345,050 for the construction of the 2024 pavement preservation project, and to approve a budget amendment to cover a bid higher than the engineer's estimate, which is an overage of 233,589.61, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and approve construction change orders up to a cumulative total of 10% of the total contract amount. I'm going to turn it over to Walter Cullen, who is our director and services facilities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So every year, the city of Willets has been identifying a pavement preservation project, they usually take about two years to put and implement to get funding. This one is taking care of several areas that were identified a couple of years ago, Blosser, Locust, Walnut, and areas of East Commercial. Budget was constructed using a large portion of SB 1 funds from the state of California and transportation funds, and transportation funds that are identified specifically for road projects. This project, we had three, on a mandatory walkthrough, three companies that came through that were interested. In the interim time between when we did the mandatory walkthrough and came to bid, unfortunately, we only had one bidder, one of the other contractors got another project in Santa Cruz, and the other one got two other projects, including one on the coast. Part of the problem is that there's a high demand and low availability of qualified, licensed A contractors, so we had one bid, and unfortunately it came in higher, 233,589.61 over our engineer's estimate. We looked at options, there, we can eliminate a little portion of the project and save about 106,000, we could go back to bid in, if we go back to bid now, we'd not be able to complete the project this, until next year. There's no chance, there's not a lot of guarantees that will be a lower price. Construction costs are rising considerably. The state budget office of California on public works projects has estimated the last two years, there's been a 25 to 30% increase in public works projects. So if we hold off, we are not guaranteed that we'll get a better price in the springtime. And it's, like I said, a shortage of available contractors in the North Coast. So we're asking, we have budgetary funds available from our transportation funds and everything to cover it. So we're looking at whether we award, and for the 1.12, 345.50 million, and go ahead with the project, which would start in about a month or so if we award bid now.
And for the public's purposes, can you just briefly talk about what the 2024 preservation project is?
One, the major portion is going to identify, there's been erosion and road issues with Locust around the school, around Blosser School, it's going to provide sidewalks, it's going to provide ADA access for students, and make road improvements, yes.
You said Blosser.
I mean, Bechtel School, sorry, Bechtel School, sorry. We're also working on Blosser. And it's going to provide better drainage, part of, a big part of the project is a bio swale, vegetative swale, that's going to help absorb water there and improve drainage in the area. We've had drainage issues at the end of Locust and Walnut. We're also working with the skunk train to improve drainage of the small canal there that they are responsible for. And this is going to help with drainage and problems with the students there and stuff, not having sidewalks, there's no, it's a dirt area where they load buses, and it's causing a lot of erosion problems there. The other part is taking care of Blosser, there was a section that was done two years ago, and this is going to finish up from Highway 20 across over to the bridge and finish up a section there that was not able to be done two years ago, and clean that up and repave that area. And then there are digouts on East Commercial that are in bad condition right now that need attention. It'll address all those areas.
Okay.
What part of East Commercial?
What was that?
What part of East Commercial?
There's 10,000 square feet of various digouts of the worst areas and stuff, some of them are near the skunk train, there's heavy commercial traffic there, and the road is highly deteriorated. In our traffic study plan and road condition plan, they were identified as high traffic and very badly damaged, and need to be done soon and everything. If we want to try to reduce costs in the project, we could take those out, but they're in bad shape right now and pulling up, so those were identified as serious problems.
So since you mentioned Commercial Street-
If you're, if you're inquiring whether or not to use a property on a Commercial Street you have a property that interests, I don't think that you do. There's a, California Code of Regulations that addresses it, it's 2CCR 1872.2D1, and it says, "The financial effect of a governmental decision on a parcel of real property in which an official has a financial interest is not material if the decision solely concerns repairs, replacement, or maintenance of existing streets, water, sewer, storm, drain, or similar facilities." It's a different rule if we're talking about-
I thought so, I wanted to tread.
But we're talking about only about maintenance of existing streets.
You're not calling it a patch, that's what-
I knew that, because I had read that in that prior report, but thank you for reading that out loud as well.
Yeah, it's only repair and maintenance of existing roads, yes.
Okay. Any other counsel, go ahead.
If we were to hold off on the concrete work portion near the schools, would that have any significant impact on the cost of this project?
No, and it's a critical portion, you could not do, not, you could not pull out the concrete portion and do the roadways. It's part of the drainage plan to help the drainage problems there, and it helps with the erosion problems. The area where the buses load for the kids is a dirt area, and this will make sidewalks there and make it ADA accessible, and ADA ramps, that's a critical portion of the project, and cannot be separated out easily now.
Yeah, because the buses now load there at Locust Street-
Yes.
-those horrible buildings there.
Yes, and that's where a significant part of the erosion, part of it is bringing it up to ADA standards, when we do the road, we bring it up to ADA standards, and it's an important part of that in front of the school, yes.
Anything from you?
Actually, I just have one thing, Walter, when we, do the sidewalk there, would we be posting it as a bus zone to-
It'll be a loading zone for buses, yes, and pick up and drop off for parents, yes.
Okay, so there wouldn't be parking all the time for everybody, so it's-
No, and then further north of that, there's going to be a vegetative bio swale that's going to collect all of the water there and drain it properly into the aquifer, and that will still, we're doing it in such a way that it'll still provide parking. The field gets heavily used during soccer season and for sports, and that's not going to impair that. It's being, the project's being designed so that it does not impact usage there and everything, and parking and everything else for, for events and things, the sports events and such and everything, yes.
I heard the word soccer, but I just want to clarify, it's football.
Oh, is that what it is, the field? Okay, I thought soccer uses it also.
I don't want any confusion yet, it is football. But knowing that a lot of families use that section of the road, I am a little concerned that it's going to be loading and unloading only, because there isn't a lot of parking, and most people who do come to any kind of sporting events or-
I believe it's during school hours and stuff, yeah, and that's just the portion right outside the gate.
Outside of school hours, it would be available?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure people are, parking in places that would then cause a problem if we don't allow parking there.
It's a small part.
It'll actually be much better because it'll be much more improved there, and there'll be more defined parking and less erosion. Right now, there's a big ditch there, it's all dirt, it's, a lot of water washes through there that is washing further down the road and causing issues.
It's somebody mess.
It is, yes, and that's going to improve all of that, yes.
I'm very familiar with it, having coached sport at the middle school, having to carry equipment and such through the mud puddles to get onto the school property.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of flooding, part of the project is we're coordinating with the school district that owns a parcel right in the corner there, and they have a failed culvert that they're going to be improving, because that has been washing water into the city street and everything, causing erosion, they'll be working on that in conjunction while we're working there, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to open it up to the public, go ahead, sir.
John Almeda, used to run the Department of Transportation yard for the county of Meniscino here, and was responsible for 200 miles of road. I bet you're getting a lot of attaboys for Bosco Bell and Lenora Street, first street I was brought to after I came out of the hospital when I was born. I don't think that road was, had any maintenance on it outside of pothole patching since the 1950s. But I'll tell you something, if you want to get attaboys, and I did every time I laid mix, you lay mix. That'll make you guys more popular than anything around. Every time the county wants money for employees and stuff, they don't say, hey, that's going to keep our social services department going, they always say, hey, you want more potholes fixed, give us more money. People like roads, it's the first thing your visitors see when they come into town are roads. And Blosser Lane just beats the you-know-what out of me every time I go to the dump over there to the transfer station, I'll be very appreciative if you get that fixed. You had a guy named Herb Geezy on this city council for a lot of years, and I'll tell you, he was one of the ones that helped get the reservoir up here, Centennial Reservoir, and the one thing he always used to say to me, he would say, you're never going to get anything cheaper than today. So if you go to next year thinking that you're going to do better with the inflation that we're having, I wouldn't bet my life on it, today's the day. You'll get a lot of attaboys. Thank you.
Since you were a road guy, and I just, I wanted to ask, and you touched on that, it never gets cheaper, right?
There is.
If we kick a can, it's going to cost more, right?
I had to prepare budgets, believe me, I know. It wasn't easy, but I will say one thing, we were never in the red in this Willets yard, and we used to lay a lot of mix when I was there, thousands of tons.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, yeah, I mean, we'd like to do more, we have to identify, we have to be pretty conservative how much we bite off each year. Actually, the city of Willets, for its size, does quite a bit and everything. The county is amazing, they have an amazing amount of roads they have to contend with, we have a much smaller portion, and we've been identifying each year, we are looking ahead, two to three years, which will be the next preservation pavement project, and we are getting an updated road condition plan that was last updated in '21, we're right in the middle of that right now to see current conditions and identify going forward which roads will be, will happen each year. And we do depend extensively on state funding from SB 1 for this and stuff, we're able to bite off a lot more because we are getting state transportation funds to help fund some of these projects, including this one, yes.
Please make sure the bridge footprints are agreed with the AC when you're done.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know, that's why that's high on the list right now, yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to address us? We'll go ahead and go here, and then Randy, you'll be after.
You might all have the exact details for all the, for this budget, for this, for this resolution, but as the public member, I'm just kind of curious, where is all this money coming from? I know that what, the state was mentioned, but I've also heard the state is in this financial, you know, they're doing budget cuts also, so has that been looked at to see if this particular project is going to be affected before you make your approvals? And I don't know where else the money is coming from, it sounded like maybe from city of Willets is putting in some of it?
I'll have our, our city finance manager address that for you.
Actually, Walter.
Yeah, one of the things, we could not proceed with any of these projects, they have to, they go through a long process to identify the projects, and we have to go through a year-long process with the state to get approval. We cannot go to bid until we get confirmed funds. City Point Arena jumped the gun and lost funding, we actually have to confirm- We actually have to confirm funds before we go to bid and award bid. So we've already been guaranteed by the state of California 400,000 towards this project. And then Manny can address where the rest of the funds are coming from.
So the rest of the funds come from the state tax, I was not, sorry, not state tax, the internal tax here for gas tax and everything like that. So we have HUDA, which is the Highway Users Tax Authority, and then there's also SB 1 that's also available for that as well. And so we collect from multiple venues, and it goes into a repository where it's currently Fund 245, and that actually holds on to the funding sources for us. So we have about 2.1 million there to be able to do various projects.
Road projects specifically. You'd have to be used for road projects.
It's that, that fund is specific for road projects only.
Okay. All right, thank you. And just one more clarification. So when this project gets approved, then you said it's going to take two years to complete all those, or did I misunderstand?
No, it's been two years in the planning.
Oh, in the planning.
It's actually going to take about, I think we have it scheduled for about 140 workdays. It'll be completed early, January 2025.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, no, we're trying to get it done. The bulk of it will get done before winter, and then they'll be finishing up. We're starting a little late in the season because we had to guarantee the funding by the state. They were late in guaranteeing this funding. Their meeting was canceled, and so like I said, we have to guarantee funding first for the state before we commit to our project, yes.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that the city of Willets doesn't get hit again. Like when I first came to one of the first city meetings, I mean council meetings, I forgot exactly what the project was, but I think it was Caltrans or something, and all of a sudden, they come up with a budget that they needed so much more money that I'm sure affected the city budget. So when I hear these figures, you know, it's a lot of money, and I just want to make sure that we all understand exactly where the money's going to come from. And if there's going to be overages during the project, I hope those overages are presented to you in a timely manner before you go on with the project, because that's what, why I'm bringing this concern up, because it's like, wow, how come people didn't know that, or did council and the public didn't know that all of a sudden, you know, the city's hit with all these thousands of dollars? I forget what the amount was, but anyway, that was one, why I'm concerned or wanted to bring up the concern.
Yeah, we are too about the funding on the 23 pavement preservation project, which you alluded to, the Bosque Bell and South Lenora. We're actually just buttoning that one up, and we'll come in under budget and actually getting more work done. We've been very cognizant about not having overruns and keeping close track on change orders and things like that. So we are running a very tight budget, and I am very aware of that. And the last two road projects we've done have come in under budget and not above. So we're proud of that, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Here.
My name is Randy Dalton from here in Willets. It's going to be very difficult for me to compile my comments to three minutes because books have been written about risk benefit analysis and land use planning and rural urban interface, where you have a small town like Willets, and you have a cookie cutter project being proposed to be imposed to bring the city. My mother, I grew up in Casper, and my mother used to say the first thing city people do when they move to the country is they want streetlights and sidewalks. I think many of us have lived here for years, and we're perfectly fine with the night shade and we're perfectly fine with our dirt and our wildflowers and our deer. And you can talk about tons of cement. What about earthquakes? What about all the weight that's coming and it's covering over? 100% increase in runoff. There's a, there's a killing of the planet that's taking place. I'm not, I'm a wood stove woman. I'm not a modern, I'm a visionary. I believe that we can get energy from the sea and saltwater, oceans and pool that'll never run dry. So I'm thinking of forward, but if it's going to make a difference to where you can't live, where you live, because the earthquake has broken the pipes, which happened to my house when they dug up the road in front of my house two years ago in March of 192021, and my, my pipes broke because of the weight of the, of the heavy equipment that came in that dug up four feet down and dug a 50-foot trench from the middle of the road to my home and raised the electric bill from 143 to 399. I'm on fixed income. That's one house. I'm sure that this is going to happen in many places. My children live, have their best friend live in the Creekside Apartments. Her father walks her to town, walks her to school over here. She walks on a little path that has wildflowers. We happened to move to this country in this area. We grew up, grew up, I like small towns. We're not a cookie cutter of San Jose or Santa Rosa or Fort Lauderdale, you know, because we've got gas stations and supermarkets. Willets is Willets. Mendocino is Mendocino. And I believe our heritage here includes having a rural environment that has deer and birds and wildflowers and the quality of life where we can walk from one place to another. And 880-something thousand dollars, I'm sorry, this is exorbitant. You give me 800, you give me $400,000, we can, I've lived in towns where you've had streets in Belgium, cobblestone streets where you have gravel. My daughter owns the Weathersup Nursery. She has, she has rocks. She has rocks. I would like to propose that we not do anything further until there's a full and impartial, thorough environmental impact report, including risks. What happens if it floods? And then back to the creek, Broadus Creek, Hale Creek, and this, I went out here to find out where these roads are. The maps have not been available, which streets are impacted, the sphere of influence of moving out.
About 10 more seconds.
Okay, I'm just saying, more study needs to be done. We need, the budget should not be approved, no blank checks. I don't have a blank check, you know, even a thousand dollars, much less $800,000. And, oh, here, we're going to give it 10% more. I'm sorry. The good old boys need to be, need to be corrected when they're, they're just, they're not thinking a hundred years from now. What are we leaving for our children? What kind of a legacy are we leaving? Is it walkable? We don't need sidewalks. We could have landscaping. Okay, we could have landscaping.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm going to continue. Okay, well, there, if there's a possibility of, well, I think the Natural Resources Defense Council and those justice.
We have heard, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We also need to know that there's.
All right, is there anyone else in the back?
Nikki Copwell again. Randy, I do agree with, you know, we're Willets, I love my town, but I also agree that we desperately need a sidewalk around Backdoor Road. I live around there. It is, has been a nightmare taking my little grandkids for a walk around there, especially in that area where we're going to put the sidewalk where the buses now park. I cannot count the times my little three-year-old fell on her face because of the potholes there, because of everything. You cannot walk. We used to walk this every night. We stopped doing it because it was too dangerous for the grandkids. So I'm sorry, but I appreciate it a lot. I have witnessed, because I live right up the road from it, the flooding on Walnut, where I saw cars to half of it in standing water, you could not get to my house. So I'm sorry, I appreciate yours, but I cannot wait for this to be done. So I would please ask that this be moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
I'm Robin Leeler, resident of Willets. Thank you for your comments. I, I am opposed to more and more roads also, but in the last five years, every project that the city has taken on has been an asset to bicyclists, pedestrians, people in wheelchair, who I've dealt with a lot of family members in wheelchairs, and I want to thank the department that is putting these projects out and getting them done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You've already had your turn. Sorry, sir. All right, I'll bring him back up here.
I shall move.
I'd like to second staff recommendation.
All right, all right. Larry made a motion for the staff recommendation. Are you okay with the second on that?
Yep.
All right, any further comments? No? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Kwan?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Conolly?
Yes.
Mayor Ruffin?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, and just to be clear, it was a resolution awarding the contract in the amount indicated previously and stated in the agenda and not to exceed an additional 10% of the contract amount for any overages. All right, we're going to move on to our next order of business, which is item 9C, review and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget in preparation of our workshop.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, city council, I have for you a general fund budget.
Manny, which sheet do you want to overlook at you through the table up here?
So the item that has a gate clip on it?
Yep.
Okay. Before we begin, I want to kind of give a little bit of a caveat.
Is this recycled? I don't refer to this at all, or?
I'm sorry?
We're not referring to anything?
Not the new ones. The new ones we will refer to a little bit later.
Okay.
So in this, before we get started, I'd like to kind of mention exactly what's going on here with this particular budget. So this is our first time dealing with Springbrook in our budgeting process, and so this is going to be a little bit different than what we've had in the past because we've been so used to ACS. So we're learning, departments are learning, and we're trying to get things fairly presented as best as we possibly can. In this, one of the things that we did was we combined a lot of, some of the departments. So state, the state resource officer was combined into the regular police operations along with cops, and the reasons for that was because we can do a lot of projects, we can actually delineate the, the cost by project if so needed. And so that's the same thing that happened with the Page Landfill, other contingency and transfers in and out. So those were all merged together as a part of this budget so that it's actually living in a department. The second is we broke out IT and vehicles. The reasoning for that is that they're going to go into something called an Internal Service Fund. The reasoning behind that is so that the participation from various other funds can actually start to pay for IT services instead of having the general fund house all the costs. So the idea behind it is that we have what's called cost allocation methodology that will come in, and each Internal Service Fund will actually be reimbursed back for their, for their use of the particular services, whether it be IT or vehicle replacement. Yeah, the main reasonings behind vehicle replacement as well as IT is because there are costs like servers and there are costs like on the regular, like new vehicles, that we want to be able to pre-fund and have that available on a rotation so that we're never really kind of grasping for money later on down the road. Instead, we pre-plan for the actual replacement of the vehicles, and then we can also, we can also basically get them ready for service if it's a police vehicle or something like that. The last thing that we did was, this is our first time actually using Measure K. The last budgets before, the measure K was kind of there, but it really wasn't in use. This one, it'll actually be in use. There's going to be about a little over 500,000 that's going to be used in Measure K, aside from 374,000 that was previously agreed to by the Measure K Fund, by the Measure K committees.
I had a question about that earlier, and I was trying to understand it because I thought that the Measure K committee was going to have, before it was incorporated in the budget, that we were actually going to have a conversation and give a recommendation to the council about that. I heard the idea thrown out of the, you know, the three, what do you want to call it? The three, what's your?
One-third, one-third, one-third.
One-third, one-third, one-third policy.
Yeah.
But I don't think that as a committee, we really said, yeah, we like the one-third and made any kind of recommendation. So I'm a little confused that the one-third is already automatically in, in, in the budget. I'm not saying I'm totally against it, but I was when I was trying to understand the budget and look it over. I was a little confused over, is it in, is it out?
Yeah, so it's in, and you'll see it come in as a part of transfers from, operating transfers in from Measure K into the general fund. And so that's something that we can discuss later on if you want me to.
So is one-third of it in, or is two-thirds of it in the budget?
One-third.
Only one-third?
Only one-third.
The one-third that's set aside just for projects is still in a separate fund?
Yes.
And the one-third reserve is still in a separate fund?
Yeah, it's still in a separate fund.
Okay.
And there was projects that were previously approved by the Measure K committee that we added into the budget as well because it's going to be expended at that period.
So then is the one-third only one year's worth of the revenue?
Yes.
Not one-third of the total amount?
No, no.
Okay, now that makes more sense to me.
Yeah, so the 374 is one-third of the total amount that we've already received. So it's the amount, and that was agreed to by the Measure K. It has to do with Springbrook implementation, it has to do with the Leilani, sorry.
And that just coincidentally came to one-third?
Yeah, well, that didn't come to one-third. That came to like 340, 375,000, if I remember correctly. I can take a look really quick.
Maybe I can help a little bit.
A little confused again.
At this point, Measure K supplemental sales tax has accrued a balance of about 3.4 million since it was enacted back in, start of 2021. This budget proposal is taking approximately 374,000, all of that 3.4, and programming it in, and those items that Manny described, Springbrook, land.
Logistics.
Logistics, I think maybe one of the two items, was presented to the Measure K committee. So that's, that's the one.
That makes sense.
That's one fund. So now let's shift to the current budget and the current fiscal year or the current calendar year performance of Measure K. It, it tracks at 1.3. So this proposed budget takes that three model, third of it for staffing, third for projects, third for reserve, or just set aside that we're not allocating any specific use for at this time. So if you think about it, what I just said, there's going to be approximately 3 million still in a Measure K reserve that has not been allocated, and we're not advocating for usage at this time.
That is correct.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that when the Measure K committee meeting, Measure K committee meets, if, let's just throw a wild card out there and say that we don't like the one-third theory and we want to present something different to the full council as a recommendation, this isn't cemented, we're just, we're earmarking it, correct?
We could earmark it and then, yeah, and not pull the trigger.
And then if for some reason we decided to go a different way. I'm not saying we would or wouldn't, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure.
We would have to come up with a way to be able to cover the gap.
Okay.
But yes.
Because there would be a shortage.
There could be a shortage, it depends. So there may or may not be a shortage based off of the budget itself, because budgeted items doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be expended because just as much as we want to hire all the police officers, we can't necessarily have the ability yet to hire, you know, it takes time to hire those police officers.
And I was just thinking about the rationale between putting in the one-third budgeting is we have been building the parks with each, the criteria of the Measure K. We have been supporting our police department, which matched the requirements of Measure K, so it seems logical that one-third would go in.
Yeah.
Sorry if my process, I'm saying it out loud to make sure that, I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing what the voters asked and we're also, yeah, okay, thank you.
So before we get started on everything else, I want to go into a little bit about the incorporation of all these combined departments and what that does in effect to the budget itself. So one of the major things that you're going to notice throughout the budget is that there's going to be shifts, especially within the payroll, and the reasoning behind that is twofold. One of them happens to be that the, the new Springbrook software system is, I would say, accurately creating, calculating the payroll now. So what we see is actual data that's coming through. We see it come out the bank the exact same way. In the ADP system, we didn't necessarily see that. We got a report that didn't really quite. We got a report that didn't really quite jive with exactly what was actually being expended. So we ended up having to try and take a measured approach on doing what we can to make the numbers fit what actually occurred. For whatever reason, and I don't know why that is, it was, there was errors that caused us to do a lot of our payments out of what was called, what was previously the ACS version of the payroll liability fund. And that led to a lot of checks being cut out in order to be able to keep payroll running. And it did, it kept payroll running and everything like that, but it wasn't properly allocated to the, throughout the actual P and L, the profit and loss statement per se. It's not P and L, but revenue and expenditure reports. So because of that, what ended up happening was is that as we come back to it and we want to, we started looking at what was going on with the payroll, we noticed that in the liability accounts, there were recycled entries over and over again of various types. And it was part of the reason for the stall in a lot of the audits. So trying to decipher what was going on within that Fund 690 was definitely a challenge. And mostly because if the check didn't make it out, they reprinted it without doing much of any reconciliation on what happened to the check prior, and so on and so forth. We know that some of them were real, and so we were able to determine what was real and what was not, but we fixed it. And we gave it over to, the first year went over to the auditors, and we gave them all our information and all of our work papers and showed them what was going on, and they were able to follow it and approved it. So, but what that leads us to is the situation where you'll see higher-than-normal costs associated with healthcare and also with retirement. And you'll see that within the sections when you're comparing the budget from the past to the current.
I know it's not the fault of finance. I know that you're transitioning to a new program, and numbers don't all line up, but I just, it's hard for us as council to get a really good sense of whether or not, when we're comparing apples to apples, that like, these numbers make sense. I, it feels a little bit like it's, we've got a little bit of blind faith in there because we don't know the details. So without sitting here and throwing out and saying, why did it go from $389 to $585? And then you, on each line item, give us the breakdown, which we did that at the committee level. And it sounds like, you know, from, at the committee level, there were lots of little tiny things.
We've since shorted up those gaps. So if you wanted to ask a question.
It's just, it's hard. I mean, the first one that just glares right out at me is on this document that you gave us. Turn over the page. And then you've got under Calper's unfunded liability. How come there is nothing for the 2024-25?
That's because the system, the Springbrook system software actually can calculate that. And so what it is, it's actually landing in retirement now. So before, the unfunded liability wasn't landed. So what we have is a situation where each department is able to actually pay for the unfunded liability, and we can actually see where it lands.
So are you telling me that there's nothing on that line item? Because when I look up further in the document, under expenditures, you've spread it out underneath each department? And that's why the numbers are larger than they were last year?
Yes.
Kind of like, I'm looking at your cops example that you gave, and now that's probably under state grants?
It's under, it's actually under the field operations, and it will be tracked via project codes. So there, yeah, they would be in there.
So it's not as revenue under state grants?
Yeah, exactly. It's not under its own department any longer. It's under a project code. So that way, it can run, and you can see a full range of what's going on with the police department without having to kind of parse it out with, oh, a police officer's over here, and we got a police officer buried over here. Instead, you can see the totality of what is actually actively going on with the department, and from there, you can parse it out for state resource, yeah, for the school resource officer, for cops.
So then the other question I have is that for '23 and '24, we should see a significant increase because cost of materials costs more, and payroll has gone up, all of our expenditures have gone up. But our budget only shows a difference of about $37,000 increase from year '23, '24 to '24, '25. Is it because?
We are being very conservative because of the way that revenue has been coming in from the state. And so we did not want to do much in terms of operations. We wanted to make sure that we stayed within our means. And also, whenever we have a project that's associated, like, let's say for Calper's liability costs, right? If you notice that that actively stayed in with the general fund. Now it's split off amongst all of the departments. So it's, there's a little part of it that's now in streets. It's a little part of it that's now in water and sewer. So everyone's paying their share of what the cost used to be. Before, we couldn't actually separate it. There was no means or mechanism to separate it because ADP did not work that way. And so instead, what we did.
When I look at each individual department, and I look at the Calper's retirement, or I look at under retirement, that expense is included the weighted unfunded liability?
Exactly.
Because I guess we also are paying first for the yearly bill, but we're also including our, but are we paying down that unfunded liability, or is it just?
Little bit at a time, but it is getting paid down. It's just, we've got two out of the four actively paid down up until last year. And then when they lost out on that, I think it was like a 5% decrease, what ended up happening was is that then they increased our unfunded liability. That's just going to always happen. If they don't end up making the money that they attest to. Their measurement is 6.75%, and they actually were in the negative by 5.9%. So that swing had to be allocated to every single city or municipality or district that has, uses PERS. And our share happened to be $30,000 in one of the plans. I think it was $50,000 in the police plan, the old police plan. But we'll bring that one back down, too. There's also, we have something in the works, but later on. We're going to, we're going to approach that subject in the future, but right now, we're just trying to get by from this year.
All we're basically doing is allocating that expense per department?
Yes, yes. And that way, each department shares in their costs.
And then the $374,000 from Measure K that was previously approved, did you say that that was put into the '23, '24? Or you're going, or it's going to be part of the revenue for '24, '25?
Some of it was put into '23, '24 because it was expended out of that. But the rest of it was not. And so it will be expended out of '24, '25.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is the inflation and the addition of services should have made our budget go up significantly. And it's not, which means that something is supporting it. And I'm just wanting to know, is it Measure K?
No, it's not.
That's supporting it?
So, like I said earlier, the unfunded liability costs have been parsed out. So we haven't so much as increased the use of other funds. What we did was we spread out the costs of certain various items, like the unfunded liability, also like the administration.
I'm sorry, but that is not making any sense to me.
So prior to that, we spent $885,000 in the general fund to pay for the unfunded liability. But that unfunded liability, actually, some of it belonged to streets. Some of it belonged to sewer. Some of it belonged to water.
But it still comes out on the bottom line?
No, not from the general fund perspective. The general fund eats it, and then the other programs have spared that cost. That's what traditionally has happened.
Because you're talking about the sewer and the water fund?
Not paying for the costs.
That's what, OK, then that's what I was, I knew there was a missing piece.
Yeah.
That's what it is, OK.
General fund took the brunt of it in the past. Now it's being spread out to each of the development.
So general fund looks healthier in this budget because those costs are being dispersed to other funds?
Yes.
And there's less in the enterprise funds, but enterprise funds is now paying for its way for the staff.
I just knew there was a piece missing, and I couldn't put my finger on it in between Measure K and dispersing those funds correctly so that water and wastewater wasn't getting a larger share than they should. That's how we came to a more balanced budget.
It's based off of.
Because we should have had higher expenditures.
Yes.
Otherwise, and we don't. And so I was trying to figure out where that was.
Yeah.
OK. Thank you for being patient with me.
I know, please. So the budget is at, it's even out right now on paper here as $7.131 million with expenditures and revenues, revenues matching expenditures. So is there any other questions on this first page? Or the overall look?
So are you, do you think that next year, when we move back to a biennial budget, we won't see these big swings from the actual '24, '25 to the proposed '25, '26, the way we're seeing it this year?
Yeah, we won't.
So next year, we're going to have our ducks in a row, and we'll be able to compare apples to apples?
Yes.
OK.
It's hard not to compare apples to apples.
Right, I mean, honestly, when I look at this, it's just like, the things that really jump out at me are when we see a big swing from one year to the next, and I'm taking all of the place in this. And I wish that there were notes on each page that said, hey, you know, line three, the reason is, is because of this. Because in each of the meetings that we've had, in each of the workshops, you've explained all of these things. But I have to be honest with you, my brain even only holds so much. And each time we come back and we see those numbers, I sort of have a heart attack, and I think, wait, whoa, what was the difference here? And so if next year, we don't even have to worry about that, and we won't have to ask you for these notes because we'll be comparing apples to apples.
I can actually do that this year, too. I have that in this worksheet right here. So I have it all explained out, like, whenever I see it. Whenever there's a variance or a high variance, I looked into it, looked at the history, seen what happened there, and then was able to put it into a note so that people can understand.
If those were printed out on the versions that you give us, that would be very helpful.
OK.
Thank you.
I agree.
OK.
I know we've spent a lot of time at the committee level trying to process and look for any potential for the tiniest of errors. We're just trying to be diligent and.
I will print that out and have it distributed to each of you.
OK. You want to keep going?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
We can take a look at, the first one, it's 1,000, non-departmental. This is what we would call our general fund, or, and it's basically, what it is, is anything that does not have a department scope to it. So this would house a lot of the charitable contributions. The Little Lake Fire District pass through, the, you know, we used to have contingency expenses, and we didn't have them. We don't have those this year because we kept it pretty lean. And it also shows the transfers in and out of what is also coming in from Measure K and going out to the landfill project.
No questions on that page?
I would have, I'd like to take a little bit of a note, though. If you're trying to follow along and trying to figure out, like, where the transfer is actually going, take a look at the number. The last three digits of the number correspond to the fund number that it's heading towards. And on the opposite side, the last three digits on the funds coming in correspond into the fund that it came from. So when you see a transfer in, look at the last three numbers. Then you can look at that fund and see where it comes out. So that way, you can follow the dollars. It doesn't get lumped up anymore.
OK.
So you're saying, if on this, I'm going to call this page three, which is the 100 general fund?
Yep.
If we look at that transfer in for the Measure K money, you're saying that 150?
Is the fund number.
And what is 150?
150 is Measure K fund.
OK, so this is transferring into the general fund from 150 Measure K?
Yes.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you for the notes.
Yeah, no problem. So next page is city council, city clerk.
OK, and again, so the salary increases because benefits are now being?
Calculated correctly.
We didn't actually get a raise for anybody?
This was always there. It just was not visible. You couldn't find it, you couldn't see it or anything like that because the way the ADP system worked, it mashed all those numbers together. And then, so what we always did was we tried to spread it out by just the cost of salaries itself. And obviously, the cost of salaries, you guys don't have that high of a cost of salaries, so it's spread out to everybody else. This time, it's actually just showing up as part of the healthcare plan.
Manny, let's be correct. The program budget does have an increase for the council.
The program budget does have an increase for the council, yes.
So that is something that, yeah, this is what we need to discuss. So the council essentially has been frozen. This budget has a, has an upper range in there. We can tell you that, and then you can decide if you want it or you want to step it back.
So I have to say that I just completed the ethics training, and I believe there's information in there that says that councils, city councils cannot vote for their own raise. They can vote for a raise for future council members.
Yes, yes.
I just want to be clear on that.
Yes.
Because we did that when I first got onto council.
Yes.
And that wasn't really supposed to happen.
So what we're doing here, this is something that we have looked at internally. We recognize that, you know, we have all said costs are going up, inflation's going up. The amount of commitment that council members, sitting or proposed, will be making to this organization should be valued. In light of that, we have, we recognize that there has been increases for your compensation for several years as an attempt to adjust it. So as we go through this, ultimately, when the council looks to ratify the budget, if you don't want to be at a higher level, then we can remove it. There'll be some savings. If you think it's justified, it's your call.
OK, but what I'm saying is we wouldn't be able to include that in this year's budget because it wouldn't impact.
We can, we can time it so it's like a partial.
Yeah.
It would come in at the start of the calendar year.
OK.
After election.
Yeah, OK, OK, I'm tracking.
So, full disclosure, as we said, it's something for you to consider.
I watched Ukiah City Council, and when they voted themselves a raise, they, all council members effectively got the raise on January 1st, or will get the raise on January 1st of 2025, not just the new ones coming in.
I think they need to revisit that ethics training. It was pretty clear that what we just watched said that you could not, as a city council member, vote on the raise that you were going to participate in during that.
It's almost like you have to do it for like, the next round of elections.
Yeah.
OK.
You saw that, too.
Well, I mean, yeah, the answer here is not to, you're right. What we're looking to do is program that into the budget. So you so should, you want to proceed.
So the question is, do we want to take it out and make, take away the possibility that it might be enticing for somebody new to come in? Or do we want to leave it there and then revisit it as a, as a policy and decision later?
Right.
Yes.
I don't see anything wrong with leaving it there to see what's going to happen at the end of November. I mean, there might be people that, that would come in and, and want a little more than $200 for this, for their wages. I mean, I don't know if anybody is.
Are those wages?
Well, I mean, what are you going to call it?
No, I'm just being sarcastic, because the cost might be too much.
I put in times for $200, I do more than I do mowing my yard.
Okay. Shall we just leave it then?
Clarification, that's all that was.
Would you like to just leave it?
I'm fine with leaving it.
Are you okay with leaving it?
I'll leave it for now.
Because it's a policy issue for later.
Yeah, I'll leave it for that, but I have my thoughts and I'll share it later.
Okay. All right, moving on.
So pool operations, 12130. So in this, I'll tell you about the two changes I did have. So the actual amounts were, um, were higher than what I anticipated, mostly because I didn't anticipate the increases in costs for minimum wage or anything like that. So that wasn't included in, and I also didn't have near as much of the, um, of the lifeguards that we said we were going to have. So I missed, I underestimated that one by a clear amount, and so I looked back. We, we did the numbers again, and I still couldn't get up, all the way up to where it was at 236, but 192 was what I have for one pool, city manager, oh, sorry, one pool manager, one assistant pool manager, and 14 lifeguards, working at 14 weeks in the pool.
Why was our salary so low in 23, 24?
I didn't, that was, that was me not assessing exactly how much things were going to increase.
That's the minimum wage going up?
Yeah, that and, yeah.
Bringing them up.
This does have an increase for, um, the pool staff.
Yeah, it has increases for the pool staff, baked into it now.
All right, it all comes back to policy decisions and whether or not we want to continue to support the pool.
Uh, Manny, I think you skipped 1200, city administration.
Did I skip 1200? I'm sorry. You can go back to 1200.
I thought I was just on the wrong page.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's like, did I turn it the wrong way? We might have to speed it up just a little bit, too, because we're approaching 10 o'clock.
The big variance right over here is, um, general liability, and I, uh, checked in with Amy Northroom from REMITH, and that appears to be their estimate as of now, still. They haven't updated it yet, so.
They have informed us that our liability coverage is going to go up.
Yeah.
A lot of hits on it.
But do we think it's going to go up to where it was in 22, 23?
Yeah. We're hoping not.
We're hoping not. Yeah.
And then is that bud, that small amount that we budgeted in 2020, in 23, 24, going to lead to a shortfall, are we thinking in the audit?
It's a shortfall, but, um, it's not that much of a shortfall, because whenever we're in the audit, they'll actually take us up and, um, in the entirety of general fund. So as long as we have the savings in other sections, then, but yeah, we don't want to, we want to have those, um, accurate amounts in as best as we can.
Manny, when it comes to like, um, liability, it's, it's kind of like it always is being fined, right? I mean, they tell us, we think it's going to be this, but then your actuals feel like, I look back at the, I think some of this was fire related, so all of a sudden, everybody's rates shot up. And, but they didn't shoot up the year of the fire, they shot up the year after.
Yes, it's always in arrears.
Okay.
Moving towards finance.
Nothing glaring there for me, anybody else?
No.
Okay, let's move on.
HR.
I don't see anything there either, do you?
I have a question, okay, I'm going to ask you a question about that in a different time.
In a different time, okay. All right, moving on, legal.
Legal.
Nothing there for me, nope. Okay. Elections, we have to pay it?
We have to pay it, it's a national election, so.
Okay. Police administration?
Police administration. One thing with this, uh, we lost, uh, we took out a sheriff, you'll see that in the other packet, or the other items. Sorry, sergeant, it's a tariff, I apologize.
Wrong department.
So we, we removed a, yeah, I know, right, we removed a sheriff position. And, um, and to help us out with getting to the budget, and so that will represent itself in the future, actually.
And are negotiated increases included in this?
Yes, they are.
Yeah. Any questions about that page? All right. For those of you in the public, it's a lot to digest. This is all available, too, on the, uh, if you're, we're scrolling through the agenda packet. All right, police dispatch, nothing glaring there. If you're not in agreement, just say so, and we'll stop. Um, moving on to police field operations. All looks pretty straightforward. And emergency services, I did have a question that I asked Manny earlier, that you'll notice that it has, uh, for example, in, uh, emergency services on the bottom, it's got contract other.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just let the rest of council know what that is.
Okay, so that's just, in a case of an emergency, we have someplace to actually park, uh, with appropriations, things that may need for mitigation in an emergency. So, um, if all of a sudden we need to have a situation where, like the trellis, when it started getting impacted with a whole bunch of debris during that, uh, what was it, two years ago now? We had, we were able to get him over, Budelier over there really quickly, and then have them clear out that trestle, so that it cleared out the waterway.
That's just a holding expense.
It's a holding expense for us to be able to react.
I guess we call it a contingency expense for an emergency.
So that way we can react and have a place to park it.
And that's under contract, so that if we had to go get somebody to get a, or if we had to go rent a bunch of porta potties or something?
Exactly.
Manny, um, I know all, um, all of our finance directors and the weirds have done things differently, but I just wanted to, um, give the input that in past years, we've had, um, besides these breakdowns of each fund, we've also had per, per major fund, like a pie chart that shows how much goes to police, how much goes to building and planning. And I do find that helpful, because we have several, you know, funds within the general fund that go to police, and it would like, it would be nice when you're looking at the budget, just to get a simple overview.
I will develop that.
Thank you.
Manny, also going back to the emergency services, I know that this is, I think the can has been kicked several times as far as, uh, having an emergency plan. And is that, I know that somebody...
That isn't draft form right now.
All right, so should we have money in there for that, or is that coming out of this year's budget?
It, it's coming out of this year's budget, we're utilizing some leftover, uh, salary from, uh, Calabres, remaining salary to retain Golden Shine.
I mean, I guess my question is, it's always something that always needs to be taken off the chart and looked at. Should we have some money in there for that?
Um, you know, yes, no, yes, I mean, it would be good to have the funds there.
We knew it was a thousand bucks to pay for a partial consultant or something, I'm just throwing...
Yeah, we could put a placeholder in there, I mean, literally, if there's an emergency act, you know, emergency situation, we're responding. Hopefully, that it's a stage where we can rely on ultimately reimbursement from county, state, and FEMA.
Oh, what I'm talking about is the plan, you know, the, great, we have a plan, but a lot of times we have a plan, it gets thrown on the shelf, but it doesn't get used.
But couldn't that just be part of the planning department's time?
No, that's, it's...
Under emergency services.
Yeah, it's separate from community.
I mean, I'm not saying we have to put a lot in there, but I think it's one where, even if it's to have a consultant review our plan in a year or something, something comes up, so that we have it fresh.
Okay, we're going to look at it.
All right.
I just, I'm just suggesting that.
Okay.
Under the 3,000 planning, I know we're trying to fill the senior planning position, but I noticed that there's still a 52,000 under professional services. Is that in addition to the senior planner?
That is, that's land of logistics.
Couldn't we just use salary savings until we hire somebody?
It still has to land in the budget somewhere there, and we also want to be able to have the budget available for the hire. So we can have the budget there where it's available, and then not use it once we hire the city, uh, the senior planner?
You just, you just took that fund that you didn't use and then...
Yeah.
You got a savings in the, in the department.
We would have a savings in the department at that point.
Okay. So if we hired a senior planner on July 1st, we wouldn't still spend 52,000 on professional services in addition? Because according to the budget, it looks like we would.
Yeah, according to the budget, we wouldn't, um, the only difference is, is that if we took it out, then we wouldn't have the appropriations to continue the services.
Doesn't the 52,000 cover the existing contract that the city has with?
Yes.
Plan West for the Lonnie Shine, so I think, I think the budget's reflecting the ability to fill both the senior city plan acquisition as well as to, um, recognize the existing contract that the city has with planning just for Golden Shine Services.
So more likely, instead of hiring a planner on July 1st and then not spending the 52,000, we'll spend the 52,000 and not hire a planner until?
And then have salary savings.
You know, that sounds good, but, um, we actually interviewed a potential candidate. Senior planner that...
On July 1st?
The, uh, the interview committee, so we, Manny did a heavy lift, and we moved some funding around, because this is a candidate that we may not want to let go of, so we are going to be putting an offer together and seeing if that, uh, that person is going to be interesting. If that person doesn't fall through, then I think if you're looking at that scenario, just describe the first scenario.
Okay. All right.
And honestly, I'd rather come through those funds if we had the right person in place.
Yeah.
Code enforcement looks straightforward to me, any objections? Building and safety looks fine, anything glaring at you there? We've come, we've, so you know, we've combed through this many, 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 many times. And so we're, I'm just looking for anything that looks out of whack, or new information, or not from recollection of what we had before.
Do we have a vehicle plan for, uh, building safety, do they have a car or?
They have three vehicles.
They have three vehicles, yeah.
Well, community development operates.
No, two. Two vehicles.
All right, anything on building maintenance? All right, hearing done, moving on to the cannabis program.
So this one is going to be, I'm, I'm going to have an ask on this one for the next budget period, that we eliminate this particular, uh, department. It's not being used anymore, a lot of the items that it was intended to do have kind of fallen off. And so now it's just accepting basically administrative distribution. And so next year, I'd like to actually just pull that out and not have it be a part of next year's budget, next year's biennial budget.
Where would the expenses come out if some of this stuff just don't happen?
It'll, it'll start to go into more of administration, everything like that. It's, it's my, a little bit of my time, a little bit of Dusty's time, a little bit of Brian's time, a little bit of Kathy's time, and Dolores's time.
Just if I could add to that, so I think before they were, we were tracking the cannabis program costs separately from, for instance, the planning budget. There doesn't appear to be a need to do that anymore. So, um, revenue, for instance, that comes in from, um, commercial cannabis activity permits is now found in the planning budget. Uh, office expenses directly related to the same desk where the planning work happens will now be folded into the, to the planning budget, so.
It's going to be collapsed.
Yeah. I did take note that we were only looking at bringing in $80,000 in cannabis revenue, and yet we had an expenditure that was, well, 150-ish thousand, so double what we would be taking in, not to mention what we've already invested, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems kind of pointless to spend that much money on a, on an $80,000 intake. Okay, moving on. Services and facilities.
This is where Walter's a problem child.
Well, the only question I had on that one was on the bottom, that professional services, 35,000?
That's also, if I remember correctly, that's Laco?
Laco, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the, essentially, the current city engineer contract does not line with the fiscal year. It runs to August, so we need a little bit to traverse through until a new engineer is selected. And then that will be, then the new engineer will be funded slightly different, as we heard earlier from Manny's explanation.
That's to complete the three-year contract.
Yes.
And then are we going away from, uh, contract engineer to a?
No, we're preparing an RFP to solicit services for a dedicated city engineer.
It'll be structured differently, yes, and it'll be saving money and be clearer, yes.
Okay.
So another thing that Dusty pointed out to me was that, um, permit fees for medical cannabis, that's actually, um, that is actually a thing, it's more of like checks and things like that that may happen from services and facilities. I'm not exactly certain why that money is going directly into there, but that's where it's traditionally gone, is in, um, the services and facilities organization for doing some items. It's not nearly as high as 6,000, but it, I, it has been that in the past.
It's a very small amount.
It's a very small amount.
Very small, okay. I did see that it was folded in, it just was such a small amount that it wasn't significant.
And we can take a look at it later on and find out, like, what exactly is that money coming in for?
Well, who's doing the work, I'm curious.
Yeah, and who's doing the work, because I'm not exactly certain what's, what that's about. It was a, um, it's an item that has a lot of miscellaneous in it, like, um, there's, it's little bits and pieces of like $50 and $100 and something like that, and it's not much, but it's there.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it'd be more coming out of the, uh, planning department.
Yeah, so I'm uncertain as to why.
Whoever takes info or whatever happens.
I think the key thing for me is, is that we added a position because of the cannabis, and when cannabis is no longer producing and we're taking that away and folding it in, we still, we're still keeping that position, and then we're assigning that person to other types of planning tasks. And that's something to keep in mind, that we've grown our planning department, good or, good or bad, or whatever your perception is, but, uh, we don't have that funding source to support it anymore. So just, I know planning department is, been growing and has more tasks at hand, too. Moving on to services and facility operations. Just pretty much that top line under revenues, and you already explained that.
Yeah.
Okay. Parks and recreation.
So regarding on parks, the, the vote budget has an additional maintenance working program into it, uh, and that was explained back to the both planning committee and Measure K, and the justification for that is to fold. Um, over the next year or so, we're going to be incorporating several new amenities and components to our park, uh, program. And also, we're looking to offset some of these costs with sharing this position or having a mutual aid for services with a museum, where this person could be doing some, uh, groundwork work over at that complex.
The increased expense in parks makes sense, considering the direction that we gave to use a Measure K to support parks.
So my question is, um, we are coming to an agreement with the Howard Foundation to assume the maintenance of the Hill Street Trail, but there can be some financial component associated with that, with them helping to offset those costs?
Yes.
Are the, is that agreement included in this?
We just received the funding, so it wasn't as of this time, and it, but it will be included in this.
Okay, and it would go into this?
I actually think it probably will go into the, um, the parks, uh, fund. So there's a, uh, 420 Parks Fund that was created to house the bulk water sales. And so, um, and so that money continues to live on for park services. We'll actually fold that into that, so that we can keep track of it.
So Manny and I talked about it, we actually did receive the check.
Yes.
One of the checks. Um, and thank you for the Howard Foundation, for their cooperation and willing to work with us. We're going to, basically, knowing it's a four-year agreement, and we're going to present it to the council, because we're ultimately, in exchange for that, uh, revenue, you're going to have to accept the dedication of that facility. And so the proposal is for four years, for revenue to offset our costs, and as we incorporate that facility into our maintenance and, um, amenity scheduling. So we're looking at the budget, and we'll probably have some separate line items with descriptions to show that revenue coming in, but it's earmarked specifically for?
The trail.
The trail.
So we'll see the ins and outs coming out of that account, that 4, you said 420?
Yes, 420, and it'll be tracked by project code.
Okay. I think at this time, it's appropriate to open it up to the public who's been sitting so patiently. We're probably speaking a foreign language up here, because we have an opportunity to have the document before us. Does anybody want to step up and ask any questions about things that have maybe stood out to you? Nope, just now we've gone through this, but we're finding toothache. Okay. If not, I'll bring it back up here. I'd entertain a motion if somebody would like to, so move to, let's see.
No.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need a motion, we're just, we're just going to discuss it.
You gave us direction during the review. We took notes, and, uh, because it's not the final budget yet, it's still a work in progress.
Thank you. I could go back and read my notes there. All right, moving on, we still have department reports. All right, moving on, we still have department reports, city council announcements, and then adjournment, so hang in there. All right, department monthly reports are presented at the second meeting of each month, which is this meeting. They're found in the agenda packet, they're pretty extensive. If you want to know what's happening in the city of Willets, that is the spot to read because you'll find out all the details about what's happened in the last month, and there's always lots in there. So, I'll just quickly ask if there's anything additionally you want to add. Kathy, anything for airport?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, community development?
Yeah, just real quick, yeah, I've been less busy with cannabis work, but we've been managing over $12 million in grants for the city and just to share with the community here in the council, we were able to use some of the grant funds to support free dump aids. We were able to give out over 120 vouchers to the local residences, and that's supported essentially in a standard truckload of household waste to the dump. And for my mother, there's been many people going to the dump, so hopefully, that was successful, and we're looking to support that again next year and the following year as well with the Team California Grant, so I'm grateful for that. We're also able to secure grant funds to support a housing rehabilitation loan program. The application window to apply started on Monday, and the application window will be open through August 5th, and so we invite homeowners in Willets that live in their homes, if you need a new roof, a new foundation, maybe some ADA upgrades for your home, those types of improvements that will support the longevity of your home and your ability to live in our community. We invite you to fill out an application, schedule intake appointment with our code compliance officer. We're still putting the website together. There's some information on Facebook, there's some applications here at City Hall. Or please just contact the department, and we'll be happy to assist you and help explain that program. Oh my gosh, the downtown Willetts signs finally got installed on the highway, the Northern Highway interchange. I guess thank you Caltrans, and again, in talking to the business community, we recognize that every little bit of help, so if those signs can assist with getting the motors off the road and enjoying our downtown and the rest of the city, and then spending some harder money with our folks, we'll be grateful for that. And- Sorry?
Ruth?
Yeah, Ruth.
Yeah.
Then, also, big news today. About six hours ago, the public draft of the land use element for the city of Willets was posted onto the, to this, thank you, to the city website, or excuse me, not the city website, the project website, willetslanduseupdate.com. So, working on a press release, we'll get some more information out there to the papers, et cetera, and look forward to getting some, some public feedback on, on the land use element. So grateful that we were able to get that out. And then finally, just a little bit of a news, people are probably aware, Starbucks is being, going to be going in at the old Jack in the Box site. The city issued a building permit for Starbucks. They're hastily remodeling the interior of the old Jack in the Box. Additional improvements include remodeling, or re, the existing parking lot to allow for an expanded queue line. They're also be installing little outdoor patio areas with seating, and then maintaining the existing pedestrian access from Main Street to the, to the front of the building. They need to work with Caltrans to do a little bit of restriping on Highway 20. They owe the city a landscaping plan, and then other than that, they, they need to, to complete the, the building improvements per their building permit. And just real quick, I was in talking to local coffee businesses, others, there, there was a misunderstanding that somehow the city had the ability to control what commercial activities happen on private property. The reality is, we do use zoning as a tool to decide where the residential uses happen, where commercial uses happen, but we don't get to choose whether a KFC goes in there or a local restaurant, or in this case, a Starbucks. So, anyways, just wanted to provide that insight, and other than that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, finance, I think we went over it, but do you have anything to add?
Just a small thing, well, not really too much to add, just kind of add context to the staffing items in there. When I was looking at everything that was going on with the Fund 690 and everything, it's important to me to kind of recognize that we definitely need to have a plan to be able to have succession and be able to, you know, keep people within our, within our department, make sure that there's long-term growth, because the moment in time where there wasn't one, it definitely caused issues. And so, sometime soon, I'm going to be coming up with a plan to be able to provide for that, and so, I just wanted to keep that on your radar.
Thank you, that'll be a good goal for that multi-year. Okay. Chief, thank you for staying so late.
I do have two really quick updates. The first is Officer Garza will be graduating from the police academy on July 12th, which is really exciting. And in anticipation of that, we revamped the department's entire FTO manual, and, and we obtained post-accreditation of the manual, which is a really difficult process. I'm really proud of our staff, tremendous heavy lift to get that done, but we're recertified. It hasn't been done in a long time, and we're recertified with the state for that in anticipation of a new training, so that's really exciting. And then, the city manager asked that I look into mental health and homeless services in our community, and I spent some time this last month looking at that in particular. We're going to start participating in a number of programs that the county has. The first is a program called Heads Up Program. Really, that's a monthly program, and it focuses on the super users of the homeless people that draw down the most resources in a community. It's been very successful in Ukiah, and we're going to begin participating in the monthly meetings for that, really focusing on people that impact the, impact our services the most, use the emergency room and law enforcement services, and trying to find them the aid that they need to get them back in, back into a health, a more healthier environment. We're also bringing in the behavioral health outreach programming to our community. That's been very successful in Ukiah as well, where people go out into the community and engage regularly with homeless people, and trying to find resources, connect them up with resources to help them get further aid, and again, not to be a drag on our community or, or to impact services we provide. And then lastly, we're working on, years ago, I helped implement a critical incident training program within Mendocino County, and we're going to begin looking at bringing that training here to Willets. And that training is really successful because it brings mental health, behavioral health, social services, and law enforcement services together with users. And so, mental health patients and people involved in, and their families, and brings everybody together for a three-day training session, and how we can alleviate and better perform for those services for our community. We've, in the past, years ago, we held that training in Thor Bragg and also in Ukiah, and so the idea now is we bring that training here to the Willets communities. We hope to have that this fall, and I have some commitments from people in the county and behavioral health, that they, they're very interested in partnering with us to do that training. So, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Services and facilities, anything to add? Utilities? Anything there?
Nothing there, no.
Okay, all right.
I wanted to just remind everybody that the filing period for elections is coming up. July 15th is the start date to get your packets. August 9th is the last day to turn them in, or even pick up packets and turn them in, if you can do it within a day. It has to be done by appointment only, so give me a call, Dolores Peterson, City Clerk, And then if no incumbent files, that extends the packet period for, until August 14.
Larry, would you like to go first this evening for council announcements?
I have, I, we had a water meeting, Gary?
Yeah.
We had a water meeting.
You just have water?
Yeah, water and wastewater. And I think the big thing was the, was the extension of the water and sewer for the trailer park out north of town. And there were other things, right, Gary? You had all this?
Yeah, well, I actually was calling on Walter, but basically, it sounds like we got an update in on that, if you said that the, the extension out to north, that it was kind of sitting, and nothing was happening, now all of a sudden, they approached us.
Well, yeah, it's just water, it's not sewer.
Oh, sorry.
And actually, we were contacted, we're meeting with them Monday. They're, they're reaching out again from the state. They have been delayed with their engineer, and so they're reaching back out to us. Monday, we'll be meeting with them on site to start initiating the project to see if we're able to hook up a water. It's an underprivileged community, yes.
And then, if we end up doing that, we would be getting money from the state for this.
Correct, for improvements, but we still have to go through LAFCO. There's a long process with the state and with LAFCO to get this approved, yes.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll jump over to you.
Well, Larry covered the old water thing. I did have a, I'm on the Liga Cities Public Safety Committee, and we met by Zoom, and basically, we voted to, we have a retail theft legislation package, but we went from, changed it from neutral to, changed from neutral opposition to, neutral to, sorry, to-
Supporting.
Supporting to neutral, sorry about that. And that had to do because they kind of gutted the language there, and they got it set up to where if this bill passes with the initiative process, they basically are kind of watering this thing down. And that has to do with Prop 47, and basically, what's happening is that a lot of retail theft issues, you basically now, if you don't, if you don't steal more than $950 worth, you can kind of run out of the Home Depot or Mendo Mill, and it's going to be a misdemeanor. And apparently, what they don't seem to get is, on the state, we even, ACLU got on our meeting and basically said, a misdemeanor is serious. And I think after we, we heard all this, we basically said, look, we're, we would have gone with the original bill, but we were basically, as all the city representatives and folks on there said, we'll just be neutral and watch, you know, and see what happens at this point. So, kind of to send a message to the state that we're not happy. You know, they added some things in there, but they, they basically diluted the, what we wanted.
Anything else?
I attended the finance committee meeting last, was it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
With the mayor, and we heard an update on the status of our 2023, 2223 audit. We had hoped that it would be done by the end of this fiscal year, the end of this month. However, it's looking more likely now that maybe August, but-
But we're still happy.
But we're still happy, and things are moving along. Manny also gave us an update on the sewer, water, and capital, sewer fund and water fund and capital improvement plan as part of the budget workshopping, and that was about it.
All right, any other boards or committees?
No.
Okay. All right. I met with, we had an MTA meeting today, and it was all about budgeting. So, it was a long afternoon of talking about numbers from our operating budget to our capital budget. I won't bore you with the details. The only big highlight I wanted to mention was that our ridership for Mendocino Transit Authority has been rapidly increasing, which is good news, because that means that your tax dollars are more effective in doing the job that it was supposed to do. So, it was really good to see that people are going back to writing, choosing to write public transportation. And then we heard an update that Greyhound will no longer be operating, and it is likely that Amtrak will follow suit, and so, we are already putting forward, quickly going to be working on a plan to ensure that all of the local transit agencies are interconnecting together, so all those riders will still be able to have the same level of service, but what it'll do is it'll make our tax dollars more, honestly, it'll make it more effective. So, I think it's a win.
Greyhound is ceasing to exist, or?
No more Greyhound in our area. In our area, they're leaving Washington State, and then Amtrak is also, they're scaling back. It's just not, it's not a very viable private sector plan. So, it looks like the public sector is already doing it, and we're just going to do it at a higher level and scoop those passengers up, and I think we'll get more bang for our buck.
Better get your finger out and start.
Yeah, I already talked about the finance committee, so nothing else more to, yeah, nothing else, but good welfare?
I, with other members of city staff and city council, I attended the swearing-in for our new fire chief this afternoon, and I just want to say that he did indicate that they need volunteers, they need volunteer firefighters. And I hear from other agencies throughout town that they need volunteers. So, I know we're asking for people to run for office, but I'm also personally putting a plea out there to our community, please volunteer for something. Your organizations who do so much for this community need people to step up, and even if it's just a few hours a month that you can pitch in, it will truly and deeply help, whether it's the food bank or the fire department or city council, we need you, so please pitch in. Thank you.
Yes, every organization's struggling for volunteers right now. All right, with that, my watch died. It is 10:28. We're adjourned.